Now I'd like to call to order this January the 24th, 2023 Lynchburg City School Board Work Session. And we are delighted to have the opportunity to be here to do the work that is before us. And as our meeting moves along as efficiently and effectively and productively as we can, I would like the board at this time to agree on the approval of the agenda that has been featured on board docs. What is the pleasure of the board to approve tonight's work session agenda?
A move that we approve the work session agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Day. Any further questions or discussion on the matter? Yes, Dr. Gupta.
You know, we keep adding these new items at the 11th hour.
Okay.
I thought it was an anomaly when it happened last time. It happened again today, and I thought there was some cooling off period before an item could be put on our agenda unless somebody makes an amendment from the floor and adds up to the agenda. Because there's a legal disclosure requirement. How much is that, 24, 48 hours, 72 hours?
Okay. What item are you referring to, Dr.?
The agenda item number five, which board clerk sent us an email this afternoon that it has been added to the school board agenda.
Item five?
Yes.
Board goes?
Uh huh.
Yes, that's going to be a feature for us to use for measurement, Dr. Gupta, going forward via the request of the chair.
And I'm not disputing the value in terms of it being a feature or not being a feature. What I'm saying is, as a procedural question, this item added up today, late in the afternoon, and is that the policy, the school board to add an item which is for public domain to see at the 11th hour?
Typically... Right. Typically, we have the items for our agenda out as quickly as we can, but there have been times, Dr. Gupta, members of the board, where matters are added procedurally out of time sensitivity and/or to give board members a chance to appreciate its participation in the agenda. And so item five, getting back to your direct question, yes, we've done this at least the nine years that I've been on the school board.
Is there motion on the floor to approve agenda?
It is, but I do entertain all unreadiness because it's very important, and we try not to do that, Dr. Gupta, and typically we don't.
But motion on the floor is always followed by a discussion on the motion.
Sure.
And that's what's happening.
Sure.
It's clarification for the vice chair.
Sure. So if there's a motion, I was going to call a question to vote on the motion if that's appropriate.
I was discussing my concerns about the agenda.
Sure, yeah.
And I have all rights to do that.
You certainly do, yeah.
Well stated. Mr. Tross?
If I may, and this is a little unorthodox, one of the other things, just for me as personally, every, I guess, on the work sessions, we don't have a comment period amongst us board members.
That's correct.
And the other thing I struggle with is our meetings, whenever we can discuss something as a group, that's really our opportunity to do so because we can't meet without, you know, I guess, public notice and have a formal meeting. Every, occasionally, one-on-one, you know, we may talk about some different ideas. When would it be appropriate to kind of say, hey, let's just kind of round trip and throw some ideas out? You know, Dr. Brennan and I were talking about an idea, and I'd like to maybe throw it out there for other board members to kind of discuss and comment on. Is that something that would have to wait till the next board meeting where we have a comment period? Or can we do something where we just have a round, you know, some type of agenda item where we say, hey, this isn't anything that we want to talk about today and get feedback on?
Yeah, or procedurally, we can always amend the agenda, and we have done that numerous times. To the spirit of Dr. Gupta's statements, we try to make sure that the public certainly is aware of matters that are sensitive to their understanding as advanced as we can. But every board member has the right to bring a matter through the procedures adopted by this board with norms and protocols to bring something up at the actual meeting. Work sessions is a good place for those kind of things to happen, Mr. Tross, but also our business meeting or special call meetings that go through the proper procedure. And I certainly want us to entertain anything that is important to board members of interest in our board meetings, try to get us out here in as good a time as possible.
Sure. And I guess, so I guess my next approach is maybe I have to ask for this item?
Yeah.
Put on the agenda to discuss it just in an open forum. That way, the public has an opportunity to discuss it and be involved as well.
And that's the reason why typically the Tuesday before every meeting, we have agenda prep, and it is our responsibility and board leadership to bring matters that board members have indicated to that meeting for inclusion in the agenda, and then they're featured on board docs eventually.
And I understand, and I get, I understand the need to have the public comment. I almost feel like sometimes one of the things we're missing as a group is just a chance to get together and?
Yes, sir.
Talk about things without having to be so formal about it. And I struggle with that. So, but I'll go the formal process, but I just kind of struggle with that because I would love to kind of throw some ideas out and off as a group. We all have all these great minds here, and they say, you know, say, Randy, that's a bad idea, maybe it's a piece of idea.
Technically, work session is, if you look at the word work session, supposed to be very informal of topic and topics of concern to the board members.
So if someone could maybe just fill me in on the proper way to do that so that I'm not stepping on any toes, and certainly I don't want to break any rules. Actually, I don't care if I break the rules, as long as we're getting good things for the kids, but I'll write it right there.
And we'll talk tomorrow on that.
Okay.
And that's very important. And thank you for that, and I'm getting right to you, Dr. Day, because sometimes the public doesn't understand always the challenges that we have to discuss matters that are of importance. And so thank you for even bringing that up.
Exactly. I think that's what they need to, we, as a group, want to move forward. It's just the protocols, processes, and rules really hamstring us a little bit, and things move a lot more slowly than I think we all as a group would like it to move, just because we're under certain obligations by the state for public notices and things of nature. It's a struggle, I mean, it's a shame.
Dr. Day?
I share your concern, and I think I've even tried to express that in the past. But I was going to ask specifically, is, do you have something in particular that you want to discuss that's of a time-sensitive enough measure that you would want to add it to tonight's?
No, that's not time-sensitive. I just want to bounce some ideas around and get feedback from us as a group.
Okay, okay. Well, I certainly concur with that desire, so.
But your line of questioning is right on point, because we are a governing body, and we operate according to governing rules that we've established and the code. And that was excellent, Dr. Day, if it was that pertinent or you wanted us to, we're at the time now of approving the agenda. We do have a motion on the floor by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Day. If there's no further unreadiness, then Madam Clerk, could you please call the robe for the approval of the agenda for tonight's work session?
I'm sorry, school board member Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School board member Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Gupta?
No, and I want to put my record, the reason is that the protocol for minimum notice time was not followed.
School board member Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we are so delighted that our superintendent is joining us electronically tonight. And thank you, Dr. Edwards, for your outstanding stellar leadership to us. And even though my face is one-way and the screen's back here, and our deputy superintendents and board will help me if I'm not responding, if you need to respond. But at this point, we're in section C, and we're discussing the hazard commu... Wait a minute, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance, you know.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so, Dr. Edwards, we're now, and board, and those who are with us and watching, we're at our school board policy discussion, hazard communication plans, policy and procedure. And, Dr. Edwards, that you want to bring Dr. Waterco and Mr. Jackson on?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Coleman. First, let me apologize for not being there, person. I am suffering from the flu, and I didn't think any of you wanted me to share that with you, so I am participating electronically. Safety and security is something that we're discussing on an ongoing nature, so you will typically see this on a work session agenda, even if it's just for us to give you a couple updates. So I do have Dr. Waterco and Mr. Jackson here to discuss the policy as well as our hazardous communication plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Waterco.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening, everyone. So on our hazard communication plan and policy, we're a little out of order, because normally we would take this to our board member operations team to take a look at it first, to bring it forward, but we have come under the knowledge that there are some important changes to OSHA regulations that we felt like we wanted to bring forward, get it moving in the process a little faster. In the meantime, between the next two meetings, hopefully we can meet and just talk about what's there. We wanted to make sure to get this on the agenda, to move it as fast as we could, to make sure that we are in compliance with the rules that do exist.
But you did forward it to us, and I mean, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So the hazard communication procedures primarily relates to our employees and the variety of hazards that they encounter on a daily basis as a result of being an employee here. A variety, you know, oftentimes this is related to sort of maintenance-type employees or transportation, but also some of our instructional staff as well. And so Mr. Jackson spent some time working with those folks to rewrite this policy to make it sure, make sure it was done in a way that was workable as well as met the compliance standards with the OSHA requirements. Most of the things that you see are just wording kinds of changes and making sure we have full explanations of various components, like the fire safety issues and that sort of thing. And so certainly we take any questions you might have. I'll also note that we did have a scheduled, well, a planned inspection of our facilities department from the Virginia Occupational Safety and Health Program. They did give us some more than suggestions. We have some areas that we need to make some improvements, nothing that's out of the ordinary, but things that we should, we will do and to make sure that we're in compliance. And so, again, we wanted to make sure to move this along, to make sure we are in compliance, and certainly we take any questions that you might have.
All right, Dr. Day, thank you.
Are you asking for approval of this tonight, or is that going to be at a future meeting?
Yes, sir, I think we'll bring it back for the next meeting for approval.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure it was moving forward.
Okay. I do have a number of my usual petty observations here. So let me focus on the ones that I think are of substance. So on the document itself, it begins, item Roman numeral one, Hazard Communication Plan. It has A, B, C, D, E, F. F has been struck out, and that related to access to the database in the event of a power outage, and that's been removed. So is there some other assurance that this information would be available in the event that power was out?
Sure. So there is, there are a variety of other, so there's not necessarily a backup CD, because that's just not the technology that we use, but it does exist on, in paper copy?
Okay.
As well as other, sort of electronic means, like a laptop or?
So my concern was just that we, in the event of an emergency that involved the absence of power, you do want to have access to this information?
Absolutely.
Let's see. Then, a little bit farther down, under heading two, hazardous chemical inventories, the second paragraph refers to a designate to evaluate all art materials used in the division. Why are art materials singled out?
So there are, I assume there are some art materials that may have toxic components? You don't certainly want to drink paint?
I certainly understand that, but I would think that there are probably other instructional settings where there are toxic materials too. If there's an auto shop, any kind of hands-on thing, there's quite likely to be some kind of toxic materials, so.
Sure.
I don't understand why. It needs to be specific to art material.
Let me, I'll find that out and answer for you.
Let's see. And then toward the end of item three, the very last paragraph there, I had a hard time just understanding what the language meant. I'll just read what's written here. "The only container not requiring a label shall be when the entire transferred chemical substance is used. If any label becomes illegible through use or spillage, a label must be added with the required information." So is this just saying empty containers don't need to be labeled?
Yes.
I can take that.
Empty.
Right, empty.
Dr. Edwards would like to say?
Yeah, thank you. So as a former chemistry teacher, we've often had this language to refer to any container, if I'm pouring acid into a smaller container, but I'm immediately going to use that smaller container to pour in a volumetric flask to dilute the acid. That smaller container does not have to have a label, because I'm going to use what I put in there immediately in its entirety. That's probably where this language came from, and that's been standard in right-to-know hazardous communications.
I'm not at all questioning the wisdom, I just thought the language was unclear to me.
Okay, we can work on that.
Yeah, let me see if I had anything else here. No, I think that's the end of my things that I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, Dr. Day, appreciate it. Dr. Brennan?
So as compared to Dr. Day, who's so good at details, I am only good at big pictures of things, so I have just two simple questions. And I think you alluded to this, Dr. Waterco, but one question is, where are most of these materials? Are these sort of in career tech areas? Are these, where are they, kind of, number one? And number two is, who is the Environmental Safety and Community Office? Who, what was that, who is responsible for this?
So second to first is Mr. Cecil Jackson. He's the manager, and we call it an office, but it's just him.
Okay.
Does a great job, but that's something we should continue to build over time. And certainly, there are, there are a variety of materials throughout the division. As I mentioned before, certainly at the facilities departments, there are solvents and fuel and those sorts of things. Certainly in science labs, we'll learn about the art thing a little bit more. So I think in places maybe that you would not necessarily think of, you know, let me...
Great, yeah, thank you very much. And thanks to whoever, either you or Mr. Jackson, went through this document and changed so much of it, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Any further questions that board members have in tonight's work session?
Yes, sir.
Concerning C1. All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Waterco, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, of your presence and others. This will move us to section D, and the first item is instructional practices updates. Dr. Edwards, you want to bring on Mr. Coleman?
Certainly. So once again, we'd like to just share with you some of the things that we're doing in the classroom and outside to help our students succeed, and Mr. Coleman is here tonight to talk a little bit about some of those instructional practices.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening to the board. As Dr. Edwards shared, I'd like to... As Dr. Edwards shared, I'd like to use this as an opportunity to have a conversation about some of the instructional practices that we have implemented to address our goals around accelerated foundational learning. Typically, this presentation would come before you, or this was scheduled to come before you, to discuss academic progress, but due to the way that SOL tests are scheduled, we won't have those results or that information for you until February. So part of this discussion is to reiterate information that we've shared earlier this fall, but then also to just have a conversation about how things are going, and to give you some concrete examples and evidence about the work that we're doing to achieve the goals that we have here. So some of this information that you'll see is familiar. Again, if we go to Slide 1, you see, earlier this fall, we shared an overview with the school board about our key focus areas to increase achievement and to accelerate student growth. Before I talk through these priorities that we've identified, I'd like to take a moment to share my sincere gratitude to all of our teachers, all of our instructional staff and our administrators, for the work that they're doing and the relentless commitment that they have to support all of our students, both in school and to support their learning even outside of school. So again, we remain committed to focusing on these areas over time. You often hear me say that there's no marathon approach, and we certainly have urgency, but we're committed to these priorities and strategies over time, knowing that that time is what will be necessary to see the type of growth that we can sustain. So the priorities that we've identified, first is to take accountability as practitioners for the results that we are producing. And so, we prioritize student academic progress and the performance evaluation of all of our educators and administrators as a form of personal and professional accountability for our work. We've also prioritized supporting our schools that have been identified for monitoring, and I'll talk about that toward the end of this slide, with monitoring at the state level, to the Office of School Quality, but then also two of our schools that are federally monitored. So we prioritize support for those schools. In addition to that, analyzing the intervention and targeted skills development, which is another word for remediation strategies, just determining, are our remediation strategies working, or are there better ways or more impactful approaches that we can take? And then also just ensuring a priority around collaboration and professional development, so that every student is engaged with instructional opportunities that are grade-level, are relevant to them, engaging, and certainly aligned to the standards of learning. So in addition to these priorities that we've identified, we've also continued to focus our attention on strategies to make those priorities actionable. So those, that slide and this slide go together, the first, again, are the priorities, these are the ways that we are making those actionable. And so, some of those ways, and again, this is not all-encompassing, but four of those ways that we're doing this is through increased instructional coaching and professional development, aligning our instructional strategies, so if we see practices that are working and are effective. We use our PLC, which stands for Professional Learning Community Model, so that teachers can share those strategies with each other and talk about what's working. Again, we want to align those strategies and spread those strategies out if they're effective, and we facilitate through that Professional Learning Community Model. Also fostering collaboration across all of our departments, I highlighted some, Curriculum Instruction, Student Services, Special Education, NIT, fostering that collaboration across our departments, so that we can collaboratively and coherently support our schools. And then also just strategic resource allocation, which I know we'll be talking a lot about over the next several weeks, but just ensuring that the ways that we allocate our resources, both fiscal resources and human resources, to effectively serve all of our students. So as I continue this presentation, I'll share some examples about those strategies and priorities, how those have informed our work. And this is really small print, so I don't think that you'll be able to see all of that, but I want to talk to you about the Virginia Literacy Act, and most of my conversations tonight will focus on literacy. So the Virginia Literacy Act passed the General Assembly in 2022, and the implications for that, for us as a school division, is that beginning in the school year 2024, 2025, there are five guarantees, or five priorities, that we must commit to as a school division, and really all school divisions across the Commonwealth. And that's ensuring that every student in kindergarten to grade three will receive core literacy instruction that's based in scientifically-based reading and research practices. And so, every student in kindergarten to grade three, that every family will have access to online resources to support literacy development at home, that every teacher will use evidence-based literacy curriculum, that every reading specialist, in consultation with the classroom teachers, they'll coordinate and oversee those interventions and remedial supports, and that every school division will develop a literacy plan. And so, this Virginia Literacy Act requires all school divisions to do this, beginning in the school year 2024, 2025. I'm pleased to announce that we are ahead of the game with this, and so what I'll talk about tonight is how each of these areas of priority that the Virginia Literacy Act calls for are areas that we've already begun during our work in, and I'll share some of those examples with you next. So first is dealing with the professional development. Again, making sure that all of our teachers, and again, these conversations around this pertain to our early learning, so elementary schools, sure that all of our teachers have access to literacy coaches and professional development opportunities and a framework, and we're scaling this out. So first is our approach on the science of reading. So our literacy coaches and instructional supervisors, they're currently participating in letters training, and that is spelled right up there. So that, letters, stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And so, all of our teachers, sorry, our literacy coaches and instructional supervisors are going through a train-the-trainer model, so that they can better provide professional development and modeling and coaching that's embedded in the school day. And so, that science of reading approach, again, going back to the Virginia Literacy Act, is something that all school divisions are going to be required to implement, and I'll talk about that briefly here, but again, you'll hear much about it in the coming weeks. We also use GOES, which are literacy-rich texts for students in grades K through 12, to help build reading and reading comprehension skills. And then a couple of programs or strategies that are being implemented, one is Foundations, and the other is Just Words. Foundations is a foundational literacy and phonemic awareness program, and then Just Words, also dealing with word recognition and spelling. We're in year two of our implementation with that. And then Orton-Gillingham is also a professional development training model that all of our teachers will be trained in, so that they can implement the science of reading literacy approach for all of our students. So I'll pause for a moment and just say, the way that school divisions successfully increase literacy outcomes for all, first of all, is building our instructional capacity so that we are using evidence-based and science-based instructional practices in all of our classrooms. This is not to suggest that remediation and mentoring and tutoring is not necessary, there's a place for that, and at the core, we want to make sure, at a baseline, we want to make sure that all of our students get this approach, this science of reading approach that's rooted in evidence, that we can monitor, that we can track, and that our students are supported with training and professional development. So that links to the point that we raised around prioritizing professional development. Next, we'll go to our targeted skills development and enrichment opportunities. So we are currently offering 16 after-school programs and seven during-the-day tutoring, mentoring, and enrichment skills development programs. And I shared an example, I know that that is super vague, so I'll give some examples. We have, through our Virtual Academy tutoring at RS Payne, and we have math enrichment that's provided before, after school. Lincoln Middle School is also doing tutoring. Many of our schools are participating in after-school tutoring programs specifically focused around reading and math. I can provide a full, comprehensive list to the entire board. I think I did provide that to a board member who, Dr. Brennan, I believe you reached out and I provided that, but I can share that information with the entire board if you'd like to see a comprehensive list of all of our programs that are currently being offered. But more importantly, I want to call attention to, Director Reeves and I presented at the school board meeting in, what month is this? This is January, so this must be December, December, and we talked about putting a mentoring and tutoring feature on our website, so that parents who are interested in mentoring or tutoring, they could go to their school's webpage or the Lynchburg City Schools webpage. They submit a very quick form, and then that form is sent to our extended learning coordinator, and then she can connect those parents or students to tutoring or mentoring options. And so, in addition to the programs that you, that we're currently offering in these structured ways after school, we also are expanding tutoring and mentoring opportunities that parents can notify us and say, here are the things that my child might need to be more successful. We are, I believe, four weeks into that, and so we're going to continue to promote that and put information about that out there, so that parents are taking advantage of that. But if you were to go to our Lynchburg City Schools webpage, you'd see that option there for parents and families to communicate to us that there's a need for targeted skills development and enrichment opportunities. And the next, family and community. And so, we partner with the Virginia Education Foundation to host our annual beloved Book Blizzard, and this provides all of our students in our elementary schools with books for their at-home library. Certainly, we appreciate and value the learning that students do in school, and so we also want that to be sustained and continued at home. And so, this Book Blizzard allows for students to essentially shop without paying a monetary fee for books that they're interested in, that they might like, and I know Director Pew, or Superintendent Pew, supported with that and helped out, and it was just amazing for me to see students come in and see this table full of brand-new shiny books and ask if they could, like, are these ours to keep? And it's, absolutely, these are yours to keep, these are for your at-home library. And then students say, and do we have to pay money? And it's like, nope, nope, you just pick the one that you're interested in. And so, that's just one example. There are many others, examples of how we are partnering with families and communities to support literacy. Some examples of that include some of our, at Heritage Elementary School, the Fall into Learning rotation, and Lincoln Elementary School, the Book Walk, Paul Monroe Elementary School, Stream Night, I know that we've talked about some of those at board meetings. And so, truly ramping up the parental engagement and parental involvement opportunities, so that our students are being supported at home with the same types of strategies that they're being supported with at school. So lastly, I'll talk a little bit about the academic review process, and the academic review process is formally facilitated through the Office of School Quality. And essentially, there are some of our schools, and we talked about this in September when we presented our academic review data, there are some of our schools that are on state monitoring or federal monitoring for student performance in certain areas. It could be for gaps in math, or gaps in reading, or attendance in different categories. And so, each school engages in a process called an academic review, and that's when members of the school's leadership team, instructional team collaborate over a period of several weeks to identify trends of student performance and underperformance. And then they identify, what are the things that are either causing or contributing to those factors of optimal performance, or what do we see contributing to underperformance? And so, that team, then they identify evidence-based best practices and strategies to address systemic causes of that underperformance, and then we align priorities from that academic review to what those schools are focusing on through their comprehensive school improvement plan. So our schools recently completed this process as of January 8th, and then our Curriculum and Instruction team is working with our schools to provide feedback on the academic review and comprehensive school improvement plans, to make sure that, again, as schools are looking at ways to improve student performance or to address underperformance, we're using evidence-based practices, just going back to, you know, we're not just going based on feeling, or what we think might work, or what we think, you know, makes us feel good, but it's really using practices that are rooted in evidence and that we can monitor, that we can measure, that we can track over time. And so, some of our next steps, again, it includes increasing awareness about the tutoring and mentoring opportunities that our students can engage in after school or the weekends, even during the summer. And we want to scale and sustain the early literacy strategies and literacy interventions. Again, you'll hear a lot of talk about the science of reading. I brought a visual of Scarborough's reading rope. I won't go through the entire aspect of what that is, but essentially, it just deals with these various strands of what makes a proficient and successful reader, and then the instruction that needs to go into that. And so, when you think about the science of reading and how we're training all of our teachers, we know that it's not just being able to have background knowledge, or not just having good vocabulary, or being able to decode, or even phonics skills, but it's teaching those skills sequentially, at specific times, and then braiding those together in a scientifically and evidence-based way, so that our students have the reading and literacy skills, not just in their reading class, but in their social studies class, in their science class, and in their math class. So we want to scale and sustain that across our strategies that we see at the early elementary levels, but then certainly in secondary grade levels as well. And then our next step is to return to you in February, to analyze and report the SOL results that our students will be engaged in in the coming weeks. So at this time, I'll pause for some water, and then also, if you have any questions, I'll-
All right. I'm thankful, Mr. Coleman, for you presenting, and of course, everybody wants data, that won't come until later, but I think tonight's presentation and any subsequent discussion is meaningful for us, because serious, serious work is going on in our base schools. Serious work. As we move around from the various elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, serious, hard work is going on, and we are preparing ourselves, obviously, to show the results of that hard work. And so, are there any questions for Mr. Coleman at this time? Dr. Day?
So on the literacy page, I think it was page five of your presentation, you identify several different programs to increase early literacy. This letters program, GOES, Foundations, Just Words, Orton-Gillingham. Where are all these different programs coming from? Are these state-identified programs that they have suggested here are things you should use, or are we picking them out of things that we became aware of in some way?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So some of both. So all of these are evidence-based, what they call science-of-reading-based programs. And so, while the VDOE cannot recommend, per se, programs, there are programs that are considered eligible that fall under the science of reading, according to the Virginia Literacy Act. So these are programs that meet the criteria for being aligned with science-of-reading strategies. So some of that is at the state level. Certainly, many, many school divisions across the Commonwealth are using these same programs, but they also are nationally recognized and known as evidence-based impactful strategies. And so, there are literacy coaches, myself, instructional supervisors, who have familiarity with these programs. Certainly, in my previous division, we used Orton-Gillingham Foundations and Letters as well. And so, some of us bring knowledge from our prior experiences, but then others have researched across a national level, programs and professional development models that can be used to provide teachers with the skills they need to facilitate science of reading. And the science of reading is new. This is a new way to approach reading, and so, again, you'll hear it a lot, and it may sound like a buzzword, but it's something that is newer for many public education institutions. And so, this list, we don't want to increase this list and have 10 different things happening, but there are certainly many vendors and publishing companies that, as the science of reading continues to pick up, will develop, and we'll take a look at those to see if what we're currently using is meeting our needs, or if there are other providers that we should be looking at.
I guess the other aspect of this that, I won't say I'm concerned about, but it is a potential issue, is having too many different programs going at once can be confusing to the teachers. So I hope these things are being handled in a way that there's a cohesive program, not a state of confusion of which, which, which program are we using today, and which, does it depend upon what they had last week or last year?
Yep.
You understand what I mean, coordination. These things need to work consistently with each other.
Absolutely. And at a later time, when we have a lot more discussion, and I'll talk about this rope and how they coordinate together. So some of these things are curricular resources, like GOES, others are like science of, that's a, it's a philosophy, it's a way to approach teaching. And so, I don't really see it as a program, but I see it as a way to approach developing literacy skills, really across any subject area where a student would be consuming reading material. So I get what you mean, point well taken, and you're right, we don't want to have too many things on the highway, or too many cars in one lane, and they- many things on the highway, or too many cars in one lane, and then coordinating that in a way that does not overwhelm our teachers. Point is taken.
And I'm just gonna, the GEOs are classroom libraries, so that's not really a program, but they are books that support the science of reading. So those are classroom libraries, they're resources that are in our kindergarten through second-grade classrooms. They are connected to Foundations, which is at the lower level, and which is also the science of reading, and Orton-Gillingham also supports the science of reading. So they, some of their strategies overlap, so they are all focused on and working together to support that method or means of getting to the science of reading.
Okay. I have another question.
And Dr. Day?
Yeah.
We stand with you, but if in fact, because I'll come back, and everybody will get in, if it's something that you wanted to weigh in directly on what Dr. Day was just saying.
Sure, please, by all means.
Dr. Carter or Dr. Senha, to that point, then we're going right back to Dr. Day.
I did have the same questions you had, and I also had the teacher buy-in, and especially now that teachers cover for each other and substitute, or take their classes, so that was my concern, how do we select these programs? But now that you're stating that they all have a common thread, that's great. The other one is the GEOs, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
I just finished reading, I don't know how many emails yesterday, and before. So my question is, are these libraries vetted since their classrooms, like, okay?
Absolutely.
And then, okay, can I go to another one?
No, I won't come back to you.
Okay.
Because it just occurs, I'm gonna come right back to you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Senha, did you have something to that point?
Sure, just an observation to follow up on you. The Letters is really a professional development curriculum geared towards the teachers to understand what's the most recent information on the science of reading. And the little bit of background, I've looked at it, it's really kind of fascinating, and it's a quite different orientation in some ways from how reading has been traditionally taught over the decades. So I think, to the extent that that's available to teachers and they can do it, that should help, I would hope, with the buy-in. They'll feel empowered and capable to do this because they have the training in it. And I hope that they're, I don't know how you're going to manage to set aside time for them to do this with everything else that teachers have to do, especially when we're short-staffed. So that is a concern of mine, but I think it can definitely tie into that, so it trains the teachers. And secondly, I was really happy to hear you say that you're sort of ahead of the curve because that's been my experience with my daughter in kindergarten, who, by virtue of her parents, we read to her all the time, and she probably has a vocabulary of a college student, but she's actually below the benchmark in reading in her kindergarten class. So she's been assigned a reading coach. I mean, I'm delighted at all, I'm not happy that she's behind, I'm not too concerned about it, but what I love is that they've identified that, now she has a reading coach to work with her, and, you know, she can proceed from there. So it's really nice to know that we don't do a one-size-fits-all, we do identify children who need additional support, and I think it'll eventually click for her, because we're trying to do all the right things at home with reading, and speaking, and conversation, but she just needs that help. So, I agree, you guys, the schools, at least Sandusky Elementary, kindergarten is on track to be in compliance with these requirements that go into effect next year.
Right.
So, well done.
Thank you, Dr. Carter and Dr. Senha. Dr. Day, we're going right back to you, and when you're finished, then we'll go to Dr. Carter.
Okay. On page eight, you were talking about how each of the schools have done their own sort of internal assessment, and I guess the question I have is, are the results of those individual assessments at each of the different schools something that we should know about? Are there things that are coming out of that that would influence decisions we make, whether it's through the budget, or policies, or something else?
Absolutely, and I just hear one particular principal's voice in my head right now, because I talked to her yesterday, and she asked the same thing, and said, well, would it be helpful if I came to a school board meeting? And I said that what we'll do is, after we analyze and go through our academic review to identify trends that emerged across all of our schools, we certainly want to make you aware of what we're finding, because I would say that there are absolutely policy implications that I think you should certainly be aware of, and for us to really take a critical look at as we consider that if we want to get different results, we have to do things differently, we have to take a different approach, and the status quo approach, or our common approach will not get us to where we want to get, you know? And so, the answer to that is yes, and I'll just say her name, because she's probably listening, Dr. Dills would like to come back and talk with you about some ideas she has.
Well, I'd love to hear it, yeah. And I have one more point.
Please, go ahead.
If anyone want to chime in on that before I go on.
Typically, they will let me know when they do.
Okay. And you said that, I think you said maybe in February that we have more SOL results. One thing, point that was brought up at the VSBA convention, I think, Kim, you were at that session too, was that we often look at SOL numbers just in terms of pass rates, and the person giving that particular presentation was emphasizing the importance of actually seeing a distribution of scores, rather than just raw, this many passed, to see how many we really are doing phenomenal, how many are just in the drags down here, and even breaking that down into demographic categories. You know, if we think about the black community versus maybe the Asian community, just saying pass rates are different, but that doesn't tell you as much as seeing that those distribution curves actually overlap. There's some children from this category that are doing as well as the others. So I'm just suggesting that if that's possible, without placing too much of a burden on you folks to prepare it, I think that might be more useful and informative information for us to understand how our students are faring.
It is certainly possible, and I have notes from our, I know our last time that we presented SOL scores, we disaggregated pass rates by demographics, and I'll just make a note to add to that, maybe looking at the distribution as well.
Yeah.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, box plots would be really good, it's a good way to compare groups in terms of distribution, and most software will do it, and it's easy to comprehend, once you understand what it's telling you. I'm a real fan of those, because it gives you this, like, high-level look, but then you can see whether that distribution is very compact, or whether it's very spread out, and how different groups are, or different schools, however you want to group them. But you need all the scores in there to look at what it is, not just the, not just a single pass rate indicator.
Right. And, so the feedback is taken, well taken, and I think to the point that we raised in one of the earlier slides about our strategic use of data, if the way we were presenting it is not as effective, accept this feedback so that we can be more impactful with how we share the data, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Carter.
Just going, talking about the 16 after-school opportunities for additional assistance.
Yes.
Is transportation provided? I've heard from a student that they were doing, getting, receiving tutoring until the bus schedule didn't, or the schedule did not, what, did not match what the activity bus schedule was.
Yeah, I was gonna.
So they couldn't do that.
Yes.
How can we?
In some of those instances, we have an activity bus, but then others, we don't, we're not able to provide, well, we don't provide transportation at this time, but we've noted that that may be a barrier to participation.
And for that particular individual, they did not have an alternative way to attend, they were attending until that the transportation was no longer available, and they just couldn't sit there and wait for the activity bus.
Right.
Which is, I can understand that point, too, but.
And I think in those cases, if you, you know, hear from someone, that's the case, then please encourage them to reach out to the principal or the administrator in their building, because there may be a way that we can assist that person. And perhaps it's not participating in the after-school, but maybe it's providing them some tutoring and support during school. So I would just encourage any, you know, families that are listening, or any families that reach out to you all with that concern, that you just suggest they reach out to their school administrator, and their school administrator can work with our extended learning coordinator, Alter Whit, and, you know, we can try to find something that will work for them. We don't want them to be not receiving the support that they need.
So as a student, so what would I do, excuse me, what would, how would I go about doing that if I was a student? Because I don't know whether the student reached out, do you remember that one?
I don't remember.
And I think it would depend on the grade level, you know, if I'm an elementary student, I would, the parent, I think, would advocate, right? The parent would advocate. If it's a high school student, a high school student can certainly stop by the office and let them know that, you know, they'd like to speak with an administrator, and it doesn't have to be the principal, it can be an assistant principal, an associate principal, it could be a guidance counselor, someone, you know, it could be a teacher, and then a teacher could express that to an administrator. I think there are a lot of ways, so I think we just need to encourage our high school students to advocate for themselves. But again, if you are aware of that, that's something that you, as a board member, could also communicate to us, and we could facilitate, try to facilitate that, that they get some support. Because if that student is open to and wanting to participate and get that support, we certainly want to make sure that we are doing something for them.
And I'll just add that, you know, if, even if it's not the official activity bus, we have vehicles moving around the city all the time, so there may be another alternative that, you know, vehicles going by that school at a certain time, or whatever the case may be, we likely will be able to find a way to transport that student. So, certainly we'd like to have that opportunity if somebody needs it.
I kind of have a related question to.
Please, Mr. Carter.
Talking about the mentoring and the tutoring piece that you were talking about a little bit ago, how is that financially supported? How is it professionally development-supported? And where are the personnel coming from that are helping with the mentoring and so forth?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So it's financially supported through our ESER grant at this time, and so we've allocated dollars for extended learning opportunities. We're also looking at right now ways to sustain that after the ESER grant is no longer available. So we used to participate in the 21st Century Grant, and then we stopped participating in that and then used the ESER grant, but as we look forward to continuing to sustain programming over time, the 21st Century Grant will probably be a viable option, that we look forward to sustain that. Those who are staffed, the majority of individuals providing the service for tutoring and mentoring are our LCS employees. There are some instances where there are community members or retired teachers who are coming back to provide those services, but the vast majority are LCS employees. And regarding the professional development, I am not able to intelligently speak to what the professional development looks like through each program, but if you have a specific question, maybe around, like, is there training provided for non-LCS employees to provide reading support, for example, using the science of reading? You know, like, that might be a, something that we need to build out, because there is a new way to teach reading, that if you have not been a part of that science of reading training, you might not know how to teach it in that way, and we don't currently have a professional development process to get a volunteer up to speed in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just, the ESER is a COVID-related funding, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so it has a limit, it has a expiration date?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Through the end of next year.
Yes, September of 2024.
All right, very good question so far from the board. Dr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, Dr. Coleman. Mr. Coleman, thanks so much for your report, and as you said beginning, thanks to all the teachers who are working so hard to make this happen, and we know that they're the ones who are really bearing the brunt of it, and I know that they're doing a good job. And thank you for sending me the report. I asked a couple days ago to get some more information about the 17 schools before, and if you would send that to the board members, I think it's helpful to see that. It's really at all schools in some form, and I think it's nice to see it. I think the other piece of this that I'm sort of interested, I think, of the board members are, is sort of what is the participation in the programs? So, we have a list of what we're doing, we can see what we're doing, but, you know, what's, you know, who participates? And then also, in a bigger picture, and kind of relating a little what Ms. Preston was saying, is that we know we have to make changes based on our learning challenges from the last two years, and we know that based on a variety of testing, whether SOLs or some other way, we have some ground we have to make up. What are we doing this year that we didn't do last? Which of these programs are new and are helping us, and maybe using CARES or ESRA funds in order to do better this year than we did last year? And I'm not expecting an answer to that tonight, but just that concept, I think it's what the board would like to hear, perhaps with the SOL report, is what's the attendance rate? Which of these are new? You know, are we using the funding? It's come up, we have a lot of money in that category to use, are we using those funds to help the children who need the help, or help all children that need it?
Yeah. So when I return in February to share the SOL results, I'll make sure to provide detailed information about participation trends, but then also an analysis of the strategies that are being implemented, and how long we've been implementing those.
Right, and funding for that, if that's possible, too, as far as using CARES funding, being used to support those.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan, Dr. Carter, and then Dr. Gupta.
And just following up on what Dr. Brennan stated, and if a student is recommended for the, one of the after-school programs, is there a follow-up? Because by the time I heard of that student, it was too far, it was too late. But, so is there a follow-up? If a student is recommended and need that service, after-school tutoring, does anyone follow up if their student's not coming to find out what the obstacle is, or what the barrier is, and, or to recommend someone else take that place? I mean, that's.
I would imagine so, but I hesitate to answer that, because I know that that might be, it might be very specific in it, so, yeah, it might be.
Each school has, may have a different program.
Right.
Some, they're focusing on the same thing, you know, that progression of learning, and specifically, I think we're focusing most on reading and math, but every school has a little bit of a different program. But because we're using ESER funds, and even if we were using operating funds, we have certain things that we're requiring of each of the schools, and it's through their administration or through those who are sort of leading the charge in these before-after-school and during-the-day programs. You know, we need an explanation, a rationale, we ask them to keep attendance, we ask them for data, for the impact of the program, so we're not just saying, here's the money to do it, now go off and do it. So we have some accountability. So I would imagine, knowing our principals and our teachers, that there probably is some follow-up, but as Mr. Coleman said, I can't speak for those principals, because each is very different, but I certainly would think that they are going to do that, because we're asking for attendance records, and we want to see that and review that. And there is a team in CNI, and also our grant supervisor, and I have access to that, that we're monitoring that throughout the year. And then, you know, we remind them to give us that information, so I would imagine they are.
Thank you.
Dr. Gupta?
Thank you for presenting it. So you presented all these strategies, to me, they are like 30,000-feet view of what is going on. And I'm, you can share it now, or you can share it later on, email it. I'd like to see how do we operationalize those strategies, the nuts and bolts? What are we, just like you did for the literacy program, what are we doing for the science? What are we doing for the math? In terms of operationalizing all these goals we have in these slides, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And measurement of SOL is fine, measurement is an output. I'm interested in the input.
Yep.
What input are we giving to these students to excel in SO? I see that in the literacy, but that to our professional development? Professional development, to me, is to just, for the teachers and the staff to get better, but what are the students' input is in terms of literacy to sciences and math?
So one of the things that I'm excited about, so we can provide that, but I'm also excited about just the campaign that we're embarking on, to tell the story about what this looks like in practice, what the science of reading looks like in practice, what is Foundations, and why are kids so excited about it? And so, we certainly need to tell that story through many outlets, through our social media, through direct communication, even students coming here to a board meeting to talk to you about that and share that. And so- share that. And so we will certainly continue to provide that information and, and, and we'll tell the story because you're, there's many, many great things happening. And I think we need to ensure that as we describe them and talk about them, we're linking it to these strategies that I talked about that are identified as evidence-based strategies to improve student literacy skills. And then again, aligning that across other content areas like math, for example, where we're doing building back fluency, science and so forth.
Stories like if we all eat same pie or pizza, each one of has a different slice, we'll have a different experience about that. So if you ask each one of us to tell us a story, that may be different. And that's perfectly fine. That's our internal experience. But the, the ingredients used for making that pizza is what's the key to sort of leading us to that excellent experience. And that's what I was asking.
Understood.
The inputs of going into building a solid program where the achievement gap we know is being reduced, week after week, day after day, month after month. You see what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And so I'll, I'll answer that in two ways. We will, we can provide you with a comprehensive detailed summary of what that looks like in practice. And you're always welcome, like some board members do, to come see yourself. It's amazing to see in action.
Tell me the day and time and I'll be there. Because I see 11 programs. We got 12 elementary, four, two middle, two high schools, right? So it means it's not to every school. It is targeted to certain schools. So, but yes.
I will, yeah, I will reach out to you and get a clear sense of what you'd like to see. And then I'll connect you with the principal that would, would be elated to show you that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, and thank you, members of board, of the board for your questions on this item. And I think it has been helpful to hear from the administration, the instructional practices and strategies to accelerate foundational learning. And in my getting around, Mr. Coleman, it was interesting at the elementary level to notice how science is such a, an area where we're wanting to get kids ready for SOL. But the reading comprehension is critical to them being, even being able to understand the science content. So it sounds like we, as Dr. Senha said, we're targeting, that might not have been the best word, but we're identifying persons who, who need the help and we're finding ways to do that. And mentors and tutors, whether they be through in-house or volunteers coming from the community can certainly help to do that. And it has been an enjoy. And I want to thank all of those in the community, thank members of this board, who've been reaching out to community to get involved, to help us so that we can deal with this. It's hard work. It's everyday work. And I certainly appreciate what is going on. Lastly, and Mr. Coleman, you've done a fine job, but I noticed that Deputy Superintendent Pugh's name is listed and the superintendent's name is listed for this report. And this may be totally off subject. And so I'm not bringing it up for you to have to address it tonight, but if you have anything you'd like to say about it. When you start talking about instruction and instructional materials, and I know you're talking about foundational learning, but for some, there are all kinds of things that go into this. Is there anything to be said tonight about those who are concerned about the reconsideration of learning resources, complaints about learning resources, et cetera, as it relates to instruction? Dr. Edwards, Ms. Pugh, and Mr. Coleman, if you cannot answer that at all tonight, it's okay, but I just wanted to bring that up if you had anything you want to share.
Yeah, absolutely. So first and foremost, we always enjoy working directly with our families. And I would say if there's ever any kind of question, please reach out to your classroom teacher, your building, us, and we will connect you with the appropriate folks. We did approve a policy last, last month or last meeting, I should say, as well as we've had practices in place to deal with any kind of questions that family members may have about things in our curriculum, whether it's sexually explicit content, whether it's content that might trigger a prior trauma that a student had that, you know, we may not know about. And we encourage our families to work directly with us. I think Ms. Pugh can share some of the instances last year where she's worked directly with families to provide alternate assignments and, and work through some of their concerns. So I'm going to let her speak a little bit about that practice and also the practice for reviewing materials and sharing that information publicly and getting public input on it.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And, and I will just reiterate, we want to work with our families and just like I said, you know, with this, with the tutoring piece or the mentoring piece. If a family has a concern or a student has a concern, please connect with a teacher, an adult in the school, or connect with someone here in administration. And we are certainly willing to, to reach out and, and, and help you with that, you know, with that concern. Last year I did, there was, at one of our high schools, there was a parent who sent an email and reached out directly to me about some concerns with content in a book that was being read in a class. So I worked with the, the principal. I had some questions, you know, I had questions for that parent. I listened to the concerns. I met with the principal, talked through that. And there had already been the offering of an alternative assignment to that child. So the, you know, the parent had then communicated with the teacher, the teacher was working with the child. So in any of these cases, if there is a concern and a parent doesn't want their child to participate in that activity for, it might be, as Dr. Edwards said, sexually explicit content. It might be because of a past trauma, a trauma-related experience. Whatever it is, we will provide an alternative assignment, an alternative book that's focused on the same SOLs and the standards, and work with that child to not then isolate them or, you know, pull them out in, in, in that class to call attention to that. So that was a specific incident last year. The parent was, you know, happy, the child participated, read a different book, and was able to then, you know, move on from there. We do have in place, and we have had in place for many years, policies that are addressed in the selection and review of instructional materials, supplementary instructional materials, which would be books, videos, those types of things that teachers are using as resources in their classroom. We have a policy for adoption and review of textbooks. So we're looking at the content there. We also have a process, and it's not specifically stated in policy, but we have a process and a practice that has been in place for a long time about the use of supplementary books. So if a teacher wants to use a book in a class, whether it's, you know, one book and they're reading it to the, to the, the whole class, or whether it's in a book that every child will read together and they'll have conversation and, and work with that book, if it is not something that has been selected as part of the curriculum, if it's a book that the teacher wants to use and introduce, we have a process for evaluating those. And so teachers know that process. And what I would do if I was that classroom teacher and I wanted to introduce a book, there is a form that we have on our LCS Commons, which is a common location for forms for our employees that's on our website. I, as a teacher, would go there. I would complete that form. And on that form, you know, it's asking for information from the book, the reason for the selection, and, you know, the review of the book. And many times, teachers will take the time to have parents review the book. So we ask that question on the form. And then that is sent to the supervisors in the CNI department. So either Ms. Nichols-Coke, who is a secondary supervisor, she would review those, or Ms. Sarah Campbell, who is the elementary supervisor, and she would review those. They thoroughly review the book. And if they have concerns, then that book is not put on our supplemental list. If they approve of that book, then it goes on our supplemental list. Again, that list of books is on our teacher commons. So those, the teachers can go and look to see what books are approved for the, on the supplemental book list. So we have lots of things in place already. And I think what is different from, from the new, the new policy that we adopted at the January 10th meeting is the introduction of, and potentially paying attention to sexually explicit content. But I will have to say, our teachers would have paid attention to that prior to this. That would not have been something that would have, you know, come through, especially in a supplementary book, but also in a book that's being adopted or approved as part of the curriculum. Those are things that we, you know, take to heart. And so while it is on paper and it is new in paper, it hasn't, it is not new in our practice. So we, we have many examples of how we've worked with parents if they have concerns. We also have a process and a policy on, you know, review of material if a parent or a community member has a concern about that.
All right. Any member of the board, Dr. Gupta?
I'm assuming that supplementary, that topic is not for discussion today, right?
No, sir.
But we do appreciate the information, but what is aware of it and of course, future meetings that could well be.
And there is no reason that you all couldn't see the supplementary book list. But that is, it's not right now available to the public. But I do want to say that in the new policy, it specifically states that we need to provide a list, if we do have any books, that have sexually explicit content as defined in the policy. And currently, our teachers are, we're working on a process to have our teachers review the books that they have already, whether it's a book adopted, you know, through curriculum review, or whether it's a book that's on the supplementary book list, or whether it's a video that they use, whatever resource, we're asking them to review them, specifically noting the definition in policy IIA. And then if they have any concerns or find books that have, that are, you know, as defined in the policy, they are to note, to let their principal know. And then the principal will review that. And then they are, we're going to then have that list that will be posted on every school's website as well as the division website. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, and you all can imagine many, many years of, of supplementary books, of books that go along with the curriculum and the SOLs that we're teaching, many videos, those types of things. We have a large, you know, number of instructional resources that we have to review. And that is the, that is what is the large task at hand. But I feel confident in saying that because of our practices, I don't think our lists are going to be large. But we will, we're working on that, and we will have those lists up as soon as possible. It does say, and it said in the policy that it's at the start of each school year. But I know that we've put this policy in place in the middle of the school year, and I want to work with the principals and the teachers to get it up in a timely manner.
Back to you, Dr. Gupta.
I know the policy was not up for discussion since you brought it up. And it's, I'm assuming we are not re-discussing the policy here. But it is a contentious issue. After the meeting, you may have seen emails where parents have concerns about opt-in versus opt-out. Although we adopted the opt-out, but parents, some of the, have expressed that it should be an opt-in. So I just wanted to clarify, if you discuss the policy, there are certain lingering concerns that parents have expressed in regards to the policy.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Senha?
I just, in that vein, and I've, I've seen all the emails, and I understand parents' concerns. I'm a parent of a, of a student, and I'm kind of appalled at what's available to kids to see and consume outside of school, let alone what they might get in school. But remember, our teachers are part of our community. They, they share many of the same values, religious background and everything. So I have every confidence that they are, that their judgment is sound on what's appropriate or not appropriate for our students to see and read or be exposed to. And, and certainly we do have policies in place to safeguard any of that. And there are always exceptions. But on the whole, I think the community can have confidence in our teachers because they're of our community. Likewise, we have a lot of teachers who are educated at Liberty University that would have a lot of these, I don't know, a good way to express it, more conservative or a narrower tolerance for what the, for what is defined as explicit or content that a parent would object to. But this is our community. Our teachers are from our community. And I, I think we, we can have, I have confidence in them and their ability to judge. I just felt it important to say that.
I agree with that. And as a, as a former English teacher, what you also have to recognize is that these people that we do have confidence in, and we do, for the most part, have confidence in, in the teachers that are, that are in the classroom, they're in a position to ask appropriate questions, to give students the opportunity to express their points of view, and then give them an opportunity to develop a sound, logical opinion about things, some of which some of these students have experienced. As much as we'd like to pretend like they haven't, some of those things of which students have experienced. And at least you have somebody in that classroom who's going to be logical and, and have the best interests of those students at heart. And I think we, we, we need to express our confidence in teachers to do the right thing. Because for the most part, that is what's going to happen. But we also have in place a way to deal with it if in fact, as a parent, I don't feel comfortable with what it is that took place.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. Dr. Gupta, if you want to...
Let me bring the train back to the track. In terms of that learning gaps, I know we are waiting for SOL results to come, but are we, as these people are going through, students are going through interventions, are we managing, collecting data to see, do we see a, a upward trend in terms of reducing the gap, learning loss gap?
I, I haven't looked at the data in a while, but as I did mention, in each of these, we're asking, you know, for a list of students, attendance, and data to be gathered and collected so that they are looking at student progress. I haven't looked at it in a while, but I'll let Mr. Coleman speak.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna just talk about what we've talked about in our previous meeting, how professional learning communities or PLCs use student achievement data either through iXL, or how students are responding to interventions that are put in place, that that data is a part of the discussion that teachers have on a regular basis at the school level and their professional learning community meetings. So the answer is yes. And we're committed to collecting good data and strategically using that data to get a sense of the effectiveness of our interventions or remediation or core instructional practices.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Charles, go right ahead.
Take the train off the track again.
And, and before you say that, the train has not gone off the track. All of this is...
I didn't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Getting back to the review of the books, the supplementary books, you said there were some forms that are filled out by the teachers and I guess staff. Are those forms available for us to review or the public to review? Or where are the, or are they kept?
The, the actual form where the teacher's requesting a, a supplementary book?
And then, and then I'm assuming that form means that there's, are there notes?
It's been reviewed.
And there are notes on there, and I approve this or I disapprove of this, and this is the reason why?
Yes. I, I don't know if those forms are kept and how long they are kept. I do know that we have the supplementary book list, and that is also reviewed. So it's not that we put a book on there and leave it for life. Those are also reviewed at certain times. I'd have to go back and talk to the supervisors to see if we have copies of some of those forms, you know, at, at this time, you know, we, we, if a parent is concerned, again, I would like them to, you know, reach out to the administrator, reach out to someone here. And then we can have that conversation with the school leadership to find out what the, you know, what the issue is with the book. But I don't know about the forms. I'll have to check on that.
And really, the, the crux of my point there is I would be curious as to how much time, effort, and thought goes into the actual analysis and review of the book. I mean, is it just perfunctory, like boom, boom, boom? Or do they actually, someone, do they read the book? Does someone actually read the book?
Yes, they have to read the book.
It's more than one somebody.
There's more than...
And that's what I'm interested in. What is the review process? And, you know, basically, how extensive is it? And what are the criteria that make it a pass or fail? Because that's really what it is. It's either pass it or you failed it. That's what I'm interested in in terms of a, a school board member. And I think maybe the public would be interested in that too, just to kind of understand the process.
Certainly, we can, we can look into that and come back with that information. You're welcome.
Mr. Andrews?
I just want to make a quick comment. So I just want to address the elephant in the room, right?
Yeah.
So there's this notion, and I want to talk to parents, that there's this notion that we are not concerned about kids. And that, that's, that's extremely false, right? Because everybody on this board is a parent, is a constituent, and we care about kids, right? We're here because we care about kids, right? And so... And so there's sexually explicit content in all types of stuff. Shakespeare had sexually explicit content, right? To Kill a Mockingbird had sexually explicit content and racism. So I, I just want to just reassure parents that, like, we are here for the best interest of your kids, period. We're doing the work that needs to be done. And so we welcome concerns, we welcome engagement, we want people to volunteer, mentor. But it does take a toll to get beat up sometimes, right? So I just want them to know that we love their kids, and we care about their kids, and we want them to be engaged. We want them to ask questions. So that's, that's it. I just wanted to just reassure parents that we are here for their kids, period.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, that's very important. And so, thank you, Mr. Coleman, for coming. I, I think as we talk about agenda, talk about achievement gap, talk about instructional foundational learning, we're so thankful that you're providing direction. Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pugh and Superintendent Edwards, for understanding all of this as a part of kids and families coming to school and being able to do well. And this board is not bashful or shy with doing what Mr. Andrews just stated. So thank you so much, Mr. Coleman, for presenting tonight, and we look forward to, you know, coming back later with data and other types of things.
Thank you, I'll see you all next month.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. All right, D2, Student Services Update, Dr. Edwards to Dr. Brown.
Sure, and just before I transition to Dr. Brown, I want to thank Mr. Coleman and Mrs. Pugh again for their leadership and work. And in addition to the February work session being about the academic, mid-year academic progress, I just want to remind the board that we also have scheduled for, I believe it's April work session, gifted education. I mean, we talk a lot about the remediation, but let's also talk about enrichment and gifted education. So that is still to come, and let our families know that as well. I am going to transition to Dr. Brown, who was originally, we were going to call him One Topic Brown, but he has so much that he wants to share with us, that it became a Student Services Update so that he can give you a host of, excuse me, a host of information on a variety of things that he has been, he and his team have diligently worked on. And just also, one more reminder that our May work session is our work session where we're scheduled to talk specifically about discipline, discipline data as well. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Brown for a Student Services Update.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and I just want to always thank the board for the opportunity to speak before you, and it's always a pleasure. I did not prepare a brief presentation, but I understand time's of the essence. And thanks to Dr. Gupta, I've developed a strong hankering for pizza. Try to roll this as fast as we can today. But just want to provide some updates on student services and the work that we've been doing in our department. And first, I would be remiss if I didn't thank publicly my team, all the work that we're able to do this year and the changes we've been able to make has because, is because of their dedication and their diligence. And I really have a strong team, I'm extremely fortunate to have some really passionate individuals that are going above and beyond, working very late hours, working on the weekends to make sure that our students have what they need to try to make Mr. Coleman, soon to be Dr. Coleman's job much easier. So I thank them. Also, just wanted to highlight the topics for today. We're going to talk a little bit about behavior and mental health, attendance and truancy in our adult ed and our high school programs that lead towards a GED certification. Our vision, just want to remind everyone, when we first met in our work session earlier this year, when I first got on board, our vision was to become a national model for how to provide world-class behavioral and mental health supports in an educational setting. And we are very passionate about that, we believe that, and that's what we're working towards every single day when we come to work. And we know that if we become that, then our students will have the best possible experience here in Lynchburg City. Just want to give you some updates at that work session. I, I placed out my 90-day goals for our department, and just wanted to kind of circle back to some of these and just let you know that with the exception of one, we've, we've been able to accomplish all these goals. And so create some consistency with our discipline practices, be able to provide some support and resources to our highest need schools in, in ways of BCBAs and, and BCs, behavior coaches. And that's the only goal that we haven't made a lot of headway on because we didn't want to add any positions until we made sure we secured the funding, because we didn't want to use S R funding for that, just thinking about sustainability. We wanted to increase the day treatment support, hire restorative practices coordinator, start the work with restorative practices, research and develop alternative suspension programs with a second semester launch, and identify some successful alternative models that, alternative education models that work for Lynchburg City Schools. And so really proud to announce we've been able to accomplish all those things and more that will help us move towards our section about student behavior. So student behavior, just want to reiterate what restorative practices are and just kind of refresh your memory. We talked about this during our first work session. But the importance of restorative practices in all of our schools, not just at an alternative site or when students get in trouble, but alternative practices help address and discuss the needs of the school in, in open dialogue. They help build healthy relationships between educators and students, they help prevent and improve and reduce harmful behavior. They also help resolve conflict and hold individuals, and individuals and groups accountable, and they help repair harm and restore positive relationships. So in summary, restorative practices is a simple way of just saying, being really intentional about how we build relationships and how, when students do make mistakes, how we restore those relationships, and how do we make sure they understand the harm that they've done, not just to themselves but to others, and be able to move forward in a productive way. I think that's, those are skills that will be very beneficial, not just in the school setting, but as they graduate and go on to be members of our community. So quick wins as far as student behavior. Long-term hearing, discipline hearings, and our discipline matrix has helped us create a lot of consistency as we're trying to be as equitable as possible in our discipline practices. We've have created some more efficient protocols, we've implemented success plans for students who are having a high number of referrals and just need a different level of accountability, sitting down with parents and bringing them to the table, getting them involved, more involved with their principal and their students to create tangible goals and expectations for how to behave and how to move forward in the school. We've also taken our whole team, our supervisors and myself, to Title IX trainings to be more attuned to what those needs are, which has been very beneficial. And our youth mental health first aid, our supervisor of mental health, Zoe Stokes, and our Shannon Long, and our social worker team has done a phenomenal job with youth mental health first aid. And just a quick overview of that, if you recall, we talked about as all of our employees are trained as, you know, in first aid, when a student gets, or anybody in the building gets physically injured, we're all trained in the basic first aid, how to respond, how to recognize that, how to get help. Youth mental health first aid is the same concept but with mental health crisis. And if someone is experiencing a youth mental health crisis, we need, need to know what those signs are, we need to know what resources are available, and how to provide appropriate aid to those individuals. And so we had a goal of trying to roll that out in about two, two and a half years. Really wanted to push our team to get that done as soon as possible. So we're on track to hopefully get everyone in our school division trained as far as staff members in a year. And so we've already have 700 of our employees that have gone through that training, it's a day-long training. We've had folks that have signed up on Saturdays, and that's been extremely beneficial. And I, I just wanted to stress the importance of that because that's 700 individual, individuals in our school division that are trained to recognize the signs of mental health crises, crises, and be able to respond and get students the help that they need, the professional help that they need. So I think that's a huge service for our students. We also want to partner with a community organization, and I do have a friend, some friends with me in the back that I dragged them here tonight, and I just want to thank them for spending their time with us. But we have, there's Beth from Life Push, and Life Push is an organization, I'm going to let him come up at this time. You can come on up.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
Just explain a little bit more about a pilot program that we started in Heritage High School in the AIA, or some, what some people know as in-school suspension classroom, to try to change behavior. Instead of just being punitive, we always want to change behavior. And this is an organization that is a great group, very intentionally with that. So he's going to spend about two, three minutes just explaining their programs, and then we'll talk about how that program and their services will help us with our overall plan.
Thank you, the board, for having me. My name is Darius Beth, I'm the COO for Life Push. First thing I want to say, Dr. Gupta, I'm sorry, with that pizza analogy, I'm stealing that. If you don't have that copyrighted, I'm going to make some money off of that. We have a five-PhD process that we follow, it's evidence-based, and our pizza's eight years in the making. And we use this with different school systems that we work with, with our community-based services. We do things like individual counseling, we do family partnership meetings, we do mentoring in the community, KC life skills, all kinds of different professional development. And throughout this engagement process is how we, in a sense, earn the right to be able to give correction, give feedback, hold kids accountable. We were only there for four days last year, and in four days, we were able to talk to these students about how many of them have lost friends to gang violence. We were able to create Indeed accounts for eight of the students, 10 who were only eligible to create applications. One of the kids actually got a job now. We were able to talk about how important it is for them to use, you know, resumes and create things like that. We were also able to discuss social media and the importance of that, and how important it is that the image that you put out into the community, the way people perceive you, you do that, and how things that you post is not really private. We also had the opportunity to partner with Heritage, you know, right at the beginning of the school year to do, and we got to engage the ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, just kind of set the expectations for the year. And that was phenomenal, I got to give a shout out to the Heritage Administration, they have been super. I mean, just great to work with, Mr. Beatty is fantastic. Teachers have been great as well, just engaging us, you know, different students, talking about some of the behaviors that they have. When we get there every single day, they always give us an update on how things are going. Hopefully, we'll be able to get into some more schools, but it's, you know, that's short summary of what we've been doing. I appreciate you all for having me, and thank you so much.
Excellent.
Very articulate presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you so much. And really have enjoyed our partnership and look forward to expanding that in the very coming months. So just wanted to provide our board with a couple of quick behavioral stats, nothing deep, as that will come in May when we do our deep dive on our behavioral data, and we have a lot to compare and contrast with beginning of the school year, first semester, second semester, by quarter. But just wanted to kind of show you that these are some of the things that we're taking a look at and trying to make sure that we are changing our, and improving our practices to take care of these needs. So referral numbers by grades, as you can see, just quick trend data, as you look at elementary school, fifth and fourth grade and kindergarten are really the top three grade levels that are having some challenges as far as student behavior goes. Middle school, they're pretty evenly paced and, and, but seventh grade is leading, leading the way as far as referral numbers. And then in high school, it's a very big difference between the seniors. I think they've learned some lessons and are looking forward to moving into the real world. And our ninth graders are having some challenges assimilating to high school life. And what this tells us as a student service department as far as behavior is, those transitions are going to be really important leading into next year. And so those ninth graders that are going to 10th grade and the, the middle schoolers going into the ninth grade, we want to make sure that they have a really good transition plan, and those expectations are set. And we start working on that, not when they get to the high school, but while they're already still in middle school, we start working and setting those expectations. Same thing for our fifth graders and going into middle school, that's a huge transition year. I think any transition is always difficult anyways, and so I know our principals, and I want to understate this, our principals are doing a phenomenal job every single day trying to work, but we want to be able to push in as student services and provide support so we can help strengthen their work. Those numbers at the bottom indicate how many suspensions to date we have, out-of-school suspensions, the number of incidences for those referrals, referrals that came from that. So as you can see, the middle school and high school have the highest number of out-of-school suspend, students that have been out of school suspended at 506 and 420 for the high school respectively. Some of the trends that we've seen across the different grade levels, as far as at the high school, the top three violations are failure to respond to staff requests, cell phone incidences, and interfering with classroom learning, so essentially not being distracting in the classroom. At the middle school level, it's similar, interfering with the learning in the classroom, failure to respond to staff request, and reckless behavior. If you ever had a middle school or been around a middle schooler, I was a middle school principal for seven years, reckless behavior, it's a lot of rambunctiousness, some horse play and, and things like that, that they just are trying to figure themselves out. I've described jokingly, of course, middle school as educational purgatory. You don't really hear anyone say, oh, I really wish I could go back to middle school. A lot of people say I loved high school, or they remember their elementary school principal, but that middle school is, is a tough spot to, for a lot of students to figure out. And so some of the playfulness can get them in trouble sometimes, and so those are the type of referrals. And then elementary school, our, our elementary school principals and students are really intentional, I mean, excuse me, our elementary principals and teachers are really intentional about trying to take care of a lot of behaviors in the classroom without having the students to get into the habit of becoming, coming to the office over and over and over, because what that does to their identity and how they feel about themselves. So when they do get to the office, those referrals that are written are more of some severe, severe behavioral consequences. And so pushing and shoving is normally something that you'll see a little bit more of as far as the referrals go. Responding to staff in a way that interferes with learning and interfering with learning in the classroom. So those are, those are all some quick behavioral stats and data that brings us to the LCS Restore model that we are proposing and actively working towards implementing here in Lynchburg City. So with our superintendent's vision of reset and refresh the school year, we wanted to add LCS Restore, it's a play off of restorative practices, which will be ingrained in all of our schools, especially our alternative models. But we want to restore relationships and restore students' abilities to learn and achieve and succeed on a high level. And so we've broken this down into four different categories, and they're really interventions for our students to be able to take advantage of and our principals to be able to use to change student behavior. And so I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. If we have any questions, we'll make sure we can answer as many as we have at the end, but if I'm going too fast, just slow me down, I'm really trying to get to that pizza. So Saturday School is a structure that we would like to bring back. We've had that in the past, and it's a good opportunity for students that need extra support or help to go on a Saturday, work with some mentors, do some reflection on their behavior, and maybe even work out some restorative conferencing and peer mediation instead of having to be pulled out of their academic class during the day, school day, and lose that academic time to work on those issues and challenges. We wanted to create an alternative to suspension. As you know, when students are suspended out of school, they're missing time of instruction. A lot of times, it's unsupervised time, and sometimes it's not as productive in changing behavior. And so we wanted to create a center that we could send students to, to help with those and help change behavior. And that's what we're calling our Restorative Suspension Center. Really excited to announce that we are on our way to opening that center in the next, probably week and a half, two weeks, if all goes according to plan, and the snow stays away, we'll be able to open that up very quickly. So that's Restorative Suspension Center will be for students that get suspended short-term suspensions, which is 10 days or less. And instead of going home or going into the community while they're suspended, they'll go to this center. The center is going to be at Pride, the Pride Building, which is located in the Dunbar Park parking lot, which works out very well for transportation, because all of our students across the city, buses go all over to Dunbar, because it's a school for innovation. So we're able to provide some shuttles and already piggyback off the transportation system that we have there. Once in the center, we have our restorative coordinator, and we will have two restorative teachers, one for the high school and one for the middle school. It's really important to keep those classes small, and so that we are able to work with those students and have a small group setting. And so those teachers will get work from their base school teachers, which will allow them to continue to learn and, and make sure that they're not falling behind while they're on their suspension. But they also will work with the coordinator on doing some reflections, pulling out and making sure that they've had conversations about their behavior, talking about what harm have they done to themselves, who else have they harmed, and what's their plan on fixing that when they get back. We're really excited to partner with Life Push as well, who will come into these centers and work in 60 to 90-minute sessions with these students in small groups, just working on their behavior, trying to make sure that they have a really good plan before they go back to their base school. And we, we feel like this will have a really huge impact, not on the, not only on the academics of our students while they're on suspension, but also on actually changing the behavior that they, that got them in trouble and got them this suspension. The, we can also provide substance use education or addiction counseling while we're at that center. So students that may have gotten in trouble with vaping or any other types of substances, we can send to this center to actually. we can send to this center to actually be supervised for some of the things that they may have partaken while they're unsupervised and also get help. Because a lot of, a lot of our students who are partaking is, they're getting addicted because it is extremely addictive and it's hard to find those resources unless you really know who to reach out to. So that's our Restorative Suspension Center. We want to have a, a more intensive program that can help change student behavior as well. And so we're calling that our Restorative Academy. And this is a program that we are working actively towards launching in quarter four of this school year, which would be about mid-March. And so our Restorative Academy is our idea of, there are some students in our schools that are continuously getting a high number of referrals and, you know, 12, 15, sometimes 20 referrals. And as a, as a principal myself, over, over a decade, I know that sometimes when you have students like that, they're not going to get to like the 17th referral and say, oh, I need to change something. Now is the time. I need to turn this on. Sometimes they just don't have the skills that they need and they haven't been in a situation where they've been able to, to learn how to be successful in a large setting. And so our idea is to take them and work, take them into a smaller group and a smaller environment at the Restorative Academy, work with them really intentionally on those skills. And so we can have mentors and really focus on identity. When I say identity, I want to be real clear with what I mean with that. So for example, I've, I've worked with several students here lately that have gotten themselves in some trouble and just doing some mentoring in the schools. And one of the questions I always like to ask the students are, who are you? And normally they'll say their name. I was like, no, but like, what does that mean? What, who are you? What are your values? And it's, it's been shocking to see how many students just kind of smirk or look sheepish and say, I, I don't know. Like, no one's ever asked me. That's a good question. And so like, our students haven't had the opportunity to really think about who they are and what values they have. A lot of times our parents have done an amazing job of instilling those values and teaching and modeling those values for our students, but they haven't taken the time to actually, to stop and think about what those values mean to them and how they will absorb those values. And sometimes when we see students getting in trouble, it's because they haven't had that identity developed and those core values really ingrained. And so when they're just trying to make decisions for themselves, those decisions are harder to make because they haven't created a model for decision-making. And they can't have that trigger that goes off in their head of like, oh, no, I should not act this way because, you know, I, part of my value is to be honest or part of my value is to always be respectful. And so we just want to make sure that we have those opportunities in that setting to do that type of work with our students. We want to also make sure they are building skills in future planning. Having hope for a future is extremely important for our kids. You have to give them the opportunity to see their future. Sometimes it's what I call autopilot syndrome. And they just come in, they react to the bell. And so they know they need to get on the bus. They go, they go to class, they sit down. They're compliant. Bell rings, they get up, repeat, repeat, go home. And so we want to make sure that they're being really intentional and have something to shoot towards and something to strive for. And so that is our idea for our Restorative Academy. That would be a six to nine-week program. The six-week program, we set really intentional goals. We work with the families, work with principals. We work with our teachers and we work with the students. And they set goals and have a set of skills that they need to develop based off the behaviors that they're getting from their referrals. And if they're able to exhibit that successfully in six weeks, they have the skills they need. Let's send them back to the base school to be successful with everyone else. If they need a little extra time, we can add three weeks. That becomes a nine-week program. And if they still aren't successful after nine weeks, perhaps we have the wrong environment for them. So then it becomes, maybe it's a Fort Hill or Empowerment Academy or a Virtual Academy. And we work with families to develop what the needs are and find the best fit and best solution for those students to be successful. But at that point, we've tried to make sure they have the skills they need to be successful. And then we want to turn our gaze towards our community schools, Fort Hill, our elementary transition program, setting up mental health options for some students in a smaller environment and making sure that we have very rigorous opportunities with extended time that we're able to work with students at a deeper level. So that's LCS Restore. You know, it took a little bit of time to go through all that. But our timeline for everything, in November, we wanted to add TDT, therapeutic day treatment support and behavioral support. So check, we've already done that and are moving along. February, we wanted to start our alternative, our Restorative Suspension Center, and we are on pace to get that up and running in February. March and April, we're looking at starting the Restorative Academies and piloting some Saturday School programs. And then late 2023, we want to start focusing on our, our community schools and our other alternative education programs. I think it's really important to think about values when you're establishing systems like this. And so for the core values that we were really intentional about when we were putting this together was equity and defining that by meaning being very intentional to design a system that helps close the opportunity and achievement gaps. We want to focus on longevity. We don't want to create something that's really beneficial for students and then have it go away after a while. So we want this to be a fluid system that meets the ever-changing needs of education. And whatever that means and whatever obstacles we come up, we're able to navigate those with this system. We want to be effective in a system that effectively changes behavior and builds relationships and lifelong skills. And then we want to be outcomes-driven. We don't want to focus on trying to study to see if this is working after the fact. We want to be really intentional about the inputs and outputs and outcomes that we are trying, looking for. And then we want to make sure that we're moving, moving along. So some of our partnerships, I can't believe, I can't remember who said, it may have been Mr. Coleman, but someone the other, at one of the last meetings said, I don't think that you should ever set up an alternative educational setting without partners and partnerships. And so, and we just want to make sure that we have a lot of partners that we can bring to the table. And these are just some of the partners that we're already working with that are doing great work, and we want to pull them in to help out. So that's behavior in a nutshell. I'm going to try to speed up a little bit. It's kind of, like I said, it's not a quick presentation, so. Mental health updates, just wanted to provide a couple of quick stats and data. So as, if you can see, the yellow is indicating self-harm assessments, the number of self-harm assessments that we completed last school year. And then that teal color is the number of self-harm assessments that we are seeing this year. And so as you can see, like just for elementary school level, for example, 129 self-harm assessments were done last school year. And to date, we've already done 92. So we're on pace to go way past that. And then high school is already getting towards that number of 42. We've done 34 self-harm assessments so far at the high school level. And some of this is because we've done youth mental health first aid and more people are recognizing the signs of self, self-harm and mental health crises. And so we're able to provide those services, but there's definitely a need there. If you can look at the next slide, we have this similar. Blue is the last school year and yellow is this current school year. So when we do a self-harm assessment, we rank them on a low, medium, or high. High means there's imminent risk of self-harm, or maybe some harm has already been done. If students tried to do something harmful to themselves. And so as you can see, at the high risk last year, we had 85 high-risk self-assessments and we're at 54 right now. So those are really concerning numbers. What was also very concerning to me, we pulled this information from the DMAS website. Just, this outlines how many students were provided with therapeutic day treatment services over the last several years in Lynchburg City School specifically. And I don't know what happened to the screen.
They'll come up and fix it.
All right. Maybe it didn't.
We, we have it on us.
Okay, beautiful. I'll keep rolling. Hopefully folks at home can still follow along. But as you can see, from 2017 to 2020, we had somewhere between 550, 400 students enrolled in therapeutic day treatment services. And then there was a change to DMAS and Medicaid, and that took us all the way down to basically zero students receiving those services. As you reminded in those previous slides, where the needs are increasing and going higher. So we wanted to change, change and fix it as soon as possible. So if you can see the next slide, that provided the opportunity for the youth, the school-based mental health grant that we applied for. And for that grant, we put together a logic model, which has, it looks like a crazy roadmap. And I don't want to take you through that because I'll geek out on it and we will spend probably 45 minutes going over everything. I think the major things to see with the logic model that we put together for this grant are the, the outcomes. So we have short-term, midterm, and long-term outcomes that we want to experience. And some of the short-term outcomes are really increasing the number of qualified mental health professionals that we have and increasing the access, thank you, sir, increasing the access to those mental health providers, increasing the awareness of these resources, because sometimes students don't take advantage of things because they don't know that it's available to them. And increase our ability to respond effectively to mental health needs of our students and increasing the support for our counselors, our principals, our school counselors, our principals, and our teachers as well. Our midterm goal is we want to decrease the number of the turnover with mental health providers because they have really strong relationships with a lot of these families and it's invaluable to have that experience and we don't want them to leave. And so we, we want to be competitive with the private sector and keep them here. And we also want to decrease the number of self-harm incidences, mental health crisis, and absences in our schools. And our long-term goal is, what we said earlier, is we want a really effective system that provides behavioral mental health support for all of our students here in LCS. And so we went over this last time at the school board meeting, just what this grant entails and allows us to provide. We are able to hire 18 different positions between registered behavior techs and board-certified behavior analysts, eight restorative counselors. We're able to lower our social worker ratio so they're allowed to work at deeper levels with our, our students and our community and our parents. And we're able to contract some services. So where we had zero day treatment services before, we've already started implementing services in seven of our schools. So we're already off enrolling with that. So that's our mental health updates. Also, we have a plethora of other programs. I always said the principalship prepared me well for this position because as a principal, you're running here and there. You've got parents and after-school activities and instruction. But similar to that, we have our student services with, that reaches a lot of different areas. So one of the little-known programs that we have in LCS is called our ISUP Rodeo Program. ISUP is the state name for this program. It's the way students can help move towards successfully completing their GED requirements. And ISUP stands for Individual Student Alternative Education Plan. And that's at the state level is what it's called. Here in Lynchburg, we call it rodeo, which is reaching out to develop educational opportunity for our students. And so that's where the ISUP rodeo comes from. And it's more than just a GED program. It's more than just high school GED. We have two teachers in that program, Rhonda Stevens and Casey Quisenberry. And Casey and Rhonda do a phenomenal job with those students. A lot of times they're really far behind and they just do a phenomenal job. This year, we've already had nine successful completers of this program, and last year we had 22 students. And it may not seem like a huge number, but just consider that that could have been 22 dropouts of people in our community that don't have a high school equivalent of a diploma and no real opportunity for career planning or other skills in the community. And so the, the different highlights for this program is, one, that students get career and guidance counseling, career counseling and guidance. And they also have to attend a GED prep program that they work through with our teachers. They have counseling on economic impact of not completing a high school, getting a high school degree or diploma. And they also follow procedures for re-enrolling in high school programs. So some of the students that go into this realize they can finish and can't, we have a pathway for them to re-enroll back into the high school to finish. They also need to complete their career and technical education training so they can have a certification and complete their pers, econ and personal finance requirements that they would for their regular diploma. So they have more skills than just a GED when they graduate. So I just wanted to highlight that program. I also wanted to highlight our school counselors because while we've put a lot of attention on the school-based mental health grant and providing those other mental health providers to come in, one of the things that didn't qualify for that was our school counselors. By that federal definition, they just didn't qualify for that grant. But they have been doing a Herculean amount of work every single day with our kids. They're on the front lines. They are taking care of kids and, and, and just really providing a high level of care with our families. And they're invaluable to Lynchburg City Schools. I always said that counselors are the heartbeat of the school and they just always have the good feels. And so I just wanted to shout them out and say, you know, they've been doing a great job and just really appreciate all the work that they do. A lot of those self-harm assessments, they're doing those and completing those and helping parents get to the right locations to take care of their kids. And so thank you to our counselors. Our attendance team is, wow, man, they're doing a tremendous work. So coming out of a pandemic, trying to get students to come back to school, it's extremely challenging. It's a daunting task. And when students get to a certain level, they are, you know, they're being as proactive as possible. They're making calls, they're setting up robo-calls, they're sending letters home. We have a, a, a system called ITRT, Interdepartmental Truancy Review Team. And that team is initiated when students get to a certain level. We've already done 300 of those meetings between our, our small attendance and truancy team here and, and central office. And so they are doing everything possible to work with kids and get them the services and help that they needed. And then our school nurses, that's a job I never wanted. I'm a little bit of a germaphobe, so. Small little clinic with germs, I just, so thank you to our school nurses. They're doing a phenomenal job every single day and doing something I definitely can't do and nor do I want to. I also wanted to spotlight one of our programs that I don't necessarily think gets a ton of attention. And this is a great opportunity to make our community more aware. But we do have adult, an adult GED program that spans here in Lynchburg. And we also have some ideas of expanding into the community to create more access, GL program as well. And a lot of folks don't realize that that is in our wheelhouse and it's something that we take care of as well. And so we were able to hire an all-star coordinator, Contessa Brodus. And we just want to provide an opportunity for her to share exactly what her vision is for this program and the things that she's been doing before we conclude our presentation tonight. So thank you for coming.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Good evening, school, school board members. Thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you, Dr. Brown. I would like to highlight our adult ed program. I have been a part of adult ed for 16 years now. And I think we are hitting jewel and I think we've gotten to be a diamond now. So I am going to share with you all some of the things that we're doing. Traditionally, we are known as the GED High School Credential Program or the High School Equivalency. But we have added some other programs and it's the IETs. And IET stands for Integrated Education Training. And those programs are fast-track programs that lead to industry-recognized, national industry-recognized credentials. And some of these programs, I'm going to share with you all tonight, provide an income starting a base salary of $83,000. So it's a game changer for our community. We are not only making an academic impact, but we're making an economical impact in our community. So we, as I stated, we are doing these fast-forward programs that are very short in nature. They may be a week-long as, and the longest is eight weeks long. And these programs are available and funded by Title I and our community partners. As Dr. Brown spoke about, being out in the community. We have some premium community partners that provide financial support for these programs. And some of these programs are cybersecurity, Python coding. These are programs that provide a pathway to a career, not just a job. In addition to that, we offer medical pathways, starting with the PCA, which is the Personal Care Attendant, leading all the way up to LPN. We also offer the Commercial Driver's License, and that's the CDO program. Hospitality. And hospitality has four stackable credentials. So that individual for each week, for a 40-hour week, can earn a credential each week. And they can end up with four national industry-recognized credentials. And again, all of these programs are not only available to our adults, we're excited now that we've had the opportunity to meet with the counselors in the high schools and in our, our alternative school sites, Fort Hill, the Empowerment Academy, and rodeo. And we are enrolling students who finish their high school credential into these programs, giving them that pathway to a career. Thank you all so much.
He, he's fully articulate. Dr. Brown, these are some superstars that are working.
Just put people that make you look good around you, so.
Amen.
Let them do the work and get out the way. And so speaking is, is in the same theme of great people, just want to thank some of our community partners and we're looking forward to expanding services. And so a lot of our mental health providers that we've been working with, and one of our new ones that we're picking, two of our new ones we're picking up. But we've already have relationships with Impact, Harvest, and Horizon and Strategic for as far as mental health. health services, excuse me, not Harvest. Harvest and Life Push are our new organizations that we just picked up and started working with this year. And the best part about this is all of our organizations, even though they're working on the same things, they realize that the need is so great that there's plenty of work to go around. And we are all able to work in the same space and help the same students and do what's best for them without any ego. And so that's been the best part of being able to bring everybody to the table. There's plenty for us to do and there's a lot of kids to help, so I just want to thank them. Just want to talk about some next steps as far as student services go. I just want to keep things kind of broad. Of course, we have all the details and a lot of logistics to work through, especially with opening centers that we've thought through. But the biggest thing is we want to continue to train all of our staff in youth mental health first aid to make sure that we can identify the needs for these students and make our students aware of the resources that we have. Continue to hire staff and make people aware and parents and families aware of the youth, the school-based mental health grant and the opportunities we have with that. And then continue to increase the contracted services with our mental health providers. And so those are, as long, as lo, excuse me, as well as our Restorative Suspension Center and our LCS Restore System, those are our major initiatives coming up this semester. So I'll take a little brief pause and see if there are any questions you might have.
Dr. Brown, thank you for your presentation tonight, very thorough. And I want to open it for board questions. And I also want us as a board to be thinking about the fact that with the board goals that we have, there are a couple of items that we have expressed that are important and this board is working daily, every day, every week, every month. And so the board also wants to be able to work with you and you working with us to make sure that we're dealing with student services and facilities relating to alternative education. Yes, any question that anyone has? Dr. Day.
The Restorative Academy that you talked about, could you help me understand how that is different than Fort Hill and how its existence might affect, I mean, might there be students that are currently at Fort Hill, which would be at the Restorative Academy had it been available at the time?
Right.
How are those two facilities going to?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. It's a good distinction to make. So the Restorative Academy is developed and designed to be a short-term program with transition back to the base school in mind. And so while Fort Hill may, is a longer program, some of those students are over there for a year or semester or longer, some of those students will, can come out of Fort Hill into the Restorative Academy as they're getting ready to transition back to their base school to ensure that they have the skills that they need. And so that's really the difference is that it's a shorter-term program and that we're mainly focusing on students that have a high number of referral but don't rise to the level and severity of discipline that may send a student to Fort Hill. And as you all have done our long-term board hearings, as you know, there are some students that, you know, may be a good fit for this program because they don't have necessarily a lot of referrals, but maybe they made a mistake and just need some time to think about that instead of going into a longer-term program. Like Fort Hill, they would be able to go to the Restorative Academy for six to nine weeks. They may need abuse counseling or substance use counseling while they're there, get some of those skills just so that they don't have any more issues when they go back to the base school.
Do you have any initial idea of how many students it will be able to accommodate?
We're looking at that now for our pilot program. Again, we want to use data and look at small class sizes, so we're thinking about cohorts of about 12. But it depends on how we're able to fund it and if we're able to find teachers for it. So it would be a small group, I believe we, ideally 24 students in the high school programs and 24 in the middle school programs. And then our elementary school programs, if we're able to build that out, it'll be about whatever grade level we do, 10 students in that program.
I have a different question as well. So earlier in your presentation, you were showing us those charts that were showing the numbers of, I guess it was referrals by grade level, and you were commenting about, for instance, at the high school, it was the lower grades where there were higher numbers. And the middle school to high school transition seems to be difficult for a lot of students. Do we do anything with those like eighth graders while they're still at the middle school to help them be ready for what they're going to encounter at the high school, particularly the things that we can identify that seem to be problems for some of them when they get there?
Yeah, so and one of the things we did as far as consistency across all of our schools is implement the discipline matrix. And so when a student misbehaves, it's a certain consequence. At the middle schools, we work with those principals and they have differentiated the eighth grade from the sixth and seventh grade. And so those eighth graders, once they get to second semester, which is now, they're really receiving consequences to try to change their behavior that are more aligned with the high school matrix as opposed to middle school, just so they get that distinction in their head that, oh, things are a little bit different, I need to take things seriously now, there are different consequences for my actions. And I can't speak to, because I haven't been here in a while, but I believe that we probably have done some transition programs and making sure that those middle schoolers have the opportunity to see what's available at the high school so that we can ensure that, you know, they have a smoother transition into high school and it's not just show up on the first day and find your way around.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Dr. Brown, thanks so much for your leadership on this and this idea of having programs in place that are really going to be long-term to help students and not just be a quick sort of addressing of a simple problem. And the comprehensive nature is really terrific. So thank you and your staff for working on this process in such a short period of time to make, reach those goals. You know, one of the things that we all know, as you've mentioned and you pointed out, is that discipline has been a significant issue previously and this year with the number of out-of-school suspensions. And this may be directed more perhaps to Superintendent Edwards or perhaps to Deputy Superintendent Pugh, is that your slide that talks about therapeutic day treatment trends, it looked like we really dropped off the mark there in 2021, '22. And is that, I'm wondering whether that's something the board didn't do correctly as far as why did we lose those therapeutic day treatments and is there something we need to do to fix that?
Yeah, there were, there were change, no, there were changes statewide in the Medicaid and so it's not unique to Lynchburg City. Some other school systems that continue services did so because they allocated operational funds to, or solicited some grant funding to allow those services to continue. But it wasn't just, it wasn't Lynchburg City issue and it wasn't just Lynchburg City. Some of the providers had to change their models so that they were able to continue to provide services. And they shifted more towards an intensive in-school outpatient model as opposed to a therapeutic day treatment model, which has been helpful and we do have those programs in our schools. And so Strategic, Impact, and Horizon have been able to have sessions, their outpatient sessions with kids in schools. But some of our students just need support on demand and so, and more consistent support on the day-to-day and that will help them be able to be successful in the classroom.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Slide number 10, LCS Restore slide. Thank you, it's excellent presentation, very detailed. I would make, I would like to see if there's some way you can get that in front of city council, maybe a condensed presentation just on this, really as a precursor so that when we go ask for funding and things of that nature, this is what we want to do to get the best bang for the buck for the dollar to address the behavioral issues, which quite frankly, I think that maybe even behavioral issues may lead into some of the achievement issues. So it's a cascading effect if we have the behavioral issues. I think it's outstanding. I'd love to see that happen. Now, on page nine, this is, given all of what you have on the plate, very inconsequential discussion or point, but I noticed one of the behavior trends you have in the high school level lists the cellphones. And I know it's, I think some other school districts have tried it or are doing it. What would happen, and just to throw this out for food for thought, if we were to do a comprehensive ban for cellphones at the high school level? Just curious. And what are we doing currently? I know we have some kind of restrictions on cellphones, but what are we doing currently? Just to refresh my memory.
Right, and it's specific to the schools and so I don't, I don't have that memorized, but it is in their student handbooks what their policies are. And we do give the principals some autonomy of what they allow. But for the most part, during instructional time, like cellphones shouldn't be utilized and should be up so they're not a distraction in our classrooms. Some of our schools are a little bit more lenient about whether they can use it in the hallway or at lunchtime. And then I think in our middle schools, they're a little more, they're a little more stricter with those as far as when they're allowed to use those cellphones.
And I bring it up because obviously the behavior trends you identified, I know all of us as we sit in on our disciplinary board hearings, I mean, many times you see the impetus for the behavior is, has something to do with the cellphone.
Right.
And I mean, you've identified it here as a slide as well, so your data suggests that we see anecdotally in our school board meetings, just something to, I mean, I think we would catch a lot of heat initially if we were to just ban cellphones, but maybe that heat would be short-term, I don't know.
I think it's worth a discussion. And, you know, when I'm having conversations with students, one of my questions is why do you use your cellphone? Why do you have a cellphone? And it's kind of like the identity thing. I haven't had, one student in 10 years I've been a principal give me a good answer why they have a cellphone. And it's fine if they say something like, well, it helps me stay in contact with family members I don't get to see or I get to be positive or I use it to learn. And if you're, and some of our students do that, they just don't do it intentionally. And so they have a lot of opportunity to go into the negative aspects and take advantage of some negative opportunities. So it's worth having this conversation, discussion and, you know, be happy to further those conversations with.
I'm sure I'll get some comments from somebody, but that's okay. Is that going to be your agenda item? Is that going to be your?
That is one of the, what, that is one of the things. And really, you know, maybe just more in terms of behavioral issues and what's causing behavioral issues. Well, this is a slide right here that identifies it and then we deep dive deeper into it and say, okay, boom, 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 and what can we do about it? Cellphones is one of them. But I mean, I guess, I mean, we've all seen in the disciplinary board hearings, it seems like the cellphone is at the root of many of these issues.
So I just wanted to support what Mr. Trost is saying. There was a recent discipline meeting where a student had contacted another student in another school by cellphone and that person had contacted another person in another school by cellphone and there was interaction at that second school. And it all happened because of this ability to communicate it in a very negative way. And I really would, I agree with Dr. Trost. It's a, it'd be a difficult project for us to take on, but I think we should at least know, and I would hope that to both schools, sort of just the high schools, we should know what their policies are and they should be consistent, I think. I'm not sure that really should be autonomous to what the principal feels is right, it'd be better if it was consistent at both schools. So I, that's a topic that I think you were thinking about bringing up.
Absolutely. And again.
He wants more emails.
But again, and I, the administrators and the teachers of the schools, I mean, it's got to be very difficult to enforce it, so I can see that. So it's almost like, you know what, I'm not sure how you enforce it. Well, there's one way, you draw a red line and say, you know, ban them. I mean, and I guess the email's going to come, but the behavioral issues are just so important and crucial to a good education and we got to just get a handle on it. But you, applaud you, fantastic. I'm really excited about the work you've done. It's great stuff, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
We just want to hold you up here as long as we held Coleman. But the, I just want to say, I am so happy to see that now the students, when they have that in-between period, the 10 days, that they'll have somewhere to go because I know they're getting a lot of pressure at home when their parents see them and are upset and there probably are some choice words for them too. But also then they're missing out on the instructional material. Some of them were able to do it online, but a lot of them couldn't or didn't. So that's great and then they won't be just hanging out in neighborhoods, but they'll be in a program. Then the mental health, it is, it is just really troubling now how many children are suffering and for various reasons, but that's such a great thing that we're able to do this and that we have the funds and sustainability to continue that. But as for, well, I won't talk about cellphones, but that will lead to another thing. Then they'll be just back and forth about, do you have your cellphone out or where is it? But the, the other one is the self-harm assessments. Who does, the social workers do this now? And there are like different symptoms or you see different cues, clues or something that, that are telling you to be alert or warning signs for the students? Like long clothes in the summer or long sleeves?
It's a great question. It's, well, one, with the youth mental health first aid, a lot of our folks are even secretaries, bus drivers, a lot of other folks that are not just teachers are able to notify the counselors of those signs. We also have a internet monitoring system called Gaggle and it's been really instrumental in students sending emails and messages and notifications that indicate, you know, I just don't want to live anymore or, you know, those keywords will trigger that. And then that sends an email to the administrative team and myself. And so we're able to, you know, monitor that and provide help and call parents and get them the help that they need. Even over, over break on New Year's Eve, had, was able to call a parent and have a conversation with them. So that's been instrumental. But when it comes to the actual assessment, our counselors do those assessments, our social workers can do them as well. We always have a school resource officer on that team and a principal and administrator. So it does take a lot of folks to work to do those self-harm assessments and a lot of manpower. So that's why we're excited about this grant, being able to provide restorative counselors and more social workers to help share that load so that our counselors and our principals can do more of the other work that they've been doing and dive deeper with the kids they have.
All right, well, thank you so much, Dr. Brown. We've got a whole lot going on there and we appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Trost, getting back to board goals, what do we take the counselors, some good information to know. And cellphone piece, you know, I noticed the interfering with stu, interfering with learning was on all three sections and so we heard about the cellphone. I'm not bringing it up for any discussion, I know the debate. I know a few years ago, we were talking about dress code and sometimes I just wonder, even though we probably will leave it like it is, some of the kids, it's kind of hard for them to focus, Dr. Brown, on their learning because of other accessibilities of their eyesight. But in the rate, we will.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And if I could just speak to our audience listening, I have several alternative, alternative education sites to set up, so any emails about cellphones, please direct to Sam Coleman. Please don't do that either. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I, I, give Mr. Coleman, Dr. Brown a hand. Listen, board, even though we may have hoped to get out early, this is critical work. I know each of you probably need at least two minutes stretch break because we're going to go right through safety and security, the operating budget, and then board goals won't take long at all. Let's take, let's take a three and a half minute break. Let's take a, let's take a three and a half minute break, all right? Safety and security, and we certainly will wait for each of our board members to return, but when we're ready, we're going to have our next item, which is D2, D3 rather, safety and security. Dr. Edwards?
Yes. So one of the things that we wanted to do is just give you a constant update on some of our safety and security initiatives, and where we are, some we may have shared, but it never hurts to keep that in the forefront of everybody. So is everybody back, Dr. Coleman? I can't see the group.
Yes, ma'am, we, we are.
Okay, all right. So one of the first things, I just want to remind this board, and thank you for our request for a return of fund balance, which actually includes some of our safety initiatives, including adding vestibules to some of our schools that don't have them, like Dunbar, Deerington, Hutcherson. So that is in that plan that we sent over for city council review and approval. And I understand that there's some conversation regarding that, but I did want to just make this board aware that we did put those concerns, I know parents had expressed concerns about our entryways in some of our buildings that do not have the double-door vestibules. The other thing is, I may have shared with you that we have piloted some 3M film, which is a deterrent, like making the glass pretty much shatterproof, so that anybody who may have fired a gun at our window or at our glass door, it would not shatter immediately, allowing entrance, and it will delay their entrance. And we have put that film in places at RS Payne, and we're working with community group to work on some other schools. So there will be more to come about that, but I did want our community to know that we are taking their ideas and suggestions seriously and putting them in place. Excuse me. The conversation about cell phones, while it does cross over into mental health, it also crosses over into safety and security, and one of the things that we heard, particularly when there are lockdowns, lockouts, and, you know, if there is an incident, is parents' ability to access their children and children's ability to access their parents and families. So Dr. Trose, or Mr. Trose, you are correct in that that is a big discussion, one worth having. The pros and cons of doing that, we do not have a proposal for that as of yet, but as Dr. Brown said, the goal is not in our instructional area. So if you've ever been in Easty Glass, they have the blue line that is at the entryway of all your classrooms, once you cross over the blue line. Cell phones should be put away, but you can imagine that every student does that, and some of our phones are very tiny and easy to hide. And we certainly applaud our teachers for the work that they do, and recognize that some of them do spend some considerable time negotiating with students about putting their cell phones away. So it is a larger conversation that we, we do need to have regarding that. And we also just wanted to talk about some other issues to keep our students and staff safe, and that being the exploration of using canine dogs who would detect drugs, weapons, explosives. And I have to say, as an educator, was not a fan, because our schools are places for learning and laughter and love and care, but in today's world, safety keeps rising to the top. So to the degree that we can send a message that our schools are no place for drugs, weapons, or any of, you know, those items, and that we, you know, want to look at the possibility of exploring random walkthroughs of our buildings without targeting any said individual, anything, and by random, I mean unplanned. So it is not my idea to say, hey, on Tuesday at 12 o'clock, we're gonna be walking through the third floor of, no. But I do think, in all transparency, the one thing that this board has done wonderful with is notifying community of what are our concerns. And as we see an increase in, you know, school violence, and, you know, Dr. Brown talked a little bit about substance use, we are not only trying to protect the kids who are using substances, we're trying to protect the kids who are being exposed to substances, and we don't want that in our schools. So that's another initiative that we're talking, we're in conversation about, that I wanted to make this board aware of, and that we'll be bringing more detail as we have it to you. Lastly, on our agenda, every two years, we do review our memorandum of understanding with our local law enforcement. We did it last December, January 2021, so it's up for review. There is a link for community members to give input, feedback. The last time we did this, community was excellent, and school board members as well, as to the wording and some of the language that we use. We do want to stress that kids are in our care, so discipline is our business as the educators, not the officers. And they are there really, one, to build good relationships with our community law enforcement, but also to deal with bigger issues and not, you know, discipline issues. So that is spelled out in our memorandum of understanding. There is no language currently on the, in our memorandum of understanding on the use of dogs for canine units for search and seizure, even though we as administrators have the right to search our students if we, for their safety, but we have not said that. So that is something that we may want to consider as we explore this conversation further. And I am going to turn it over to Dr. Waterka, who is way more versed in all of this than I am, to kind of fill in any of the gaps that I missed.
Well, I think Dr. Edwards, as usual, you filled in very well, so I don't have a whole lot to add to that, other than this is constantly an issue that we're addressing and making sure that we're making both the capital investments as well as the operational investments that address cross-departmental issues, like the conversations we've had about discipline and mental health and those sorts of things that do, that do impact school safety as well as our relationship with our community. I also say that we need to take very seriously just the constant feeling of safety around the schools, and making sure that we are focused in on, on the instructional work that we're doing every day, and trying to build that environment with our administrators and teachers, ensuring that every day we're, we're creating that tone that is, that is focused on safety as well. So I don't have a whole lot to add to that, but, but thank you for that.
All right. Go ahead, Dr. Edwards, anything else?
No, I was gonna say, our purpose tonight was just in full transparency. I think Mr. Trose said, sometimes we don't have an opportunity to hear what we're thinking before we start making decisions. So that is our transparency of letting you hear what we think, what we're thinking as we really take this school safety, our learning environment and student mental health, along with being youth mental health trained, very serious, and we'll take any questions that we may be able to answer.
All right, thank you, Dr. Edwards, and thank you, Dr. Waterka, this is huge. Everything we're discussing tonight is huge, and this safety piece is so important. And I continue to be in prayer for our colleagues in Newport News, the superintendent and board there. It's hard to do much else there right now, other than focus on that. We haven't had that, but we're not naive that those kind of things aren't pending, and we're doing everything we can. New thoughts that are coming before us tonight. Any member of the board have a question for Dr. Edwards or Dr. Waterka at this time around safety and security?
If I may, actually, one more, one more, one thing I did forget to mention.
Please go right ahead.
And that is, Dr. Edwards mentioned the use of a safety film and exploring that in other parts of the school division to, to slow any sort of attacker down. There's a community group that's working to try to raise some money and those sorts of things, to engage those processes, to make sure that we have the resources we need to do that work, and really making sure that not only are we thinking about that, but also members of the business community and members of our community at large are also thinking about that as well. So we can partner with them, partner with the police department and others, to make sure that we are getting the resources where they need to be. So we're very thankful for that group and their interest in school safety.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Britton, did you have comments?
I, I had sort of assumed, and this is fine, it's made on the agenda, that we received the MOU because it was time to discuss this, so, but if not, there's okay. But I do want to make a couple of comments about this, and then a couple more about the sort of school safety goes. One, as far as the MOU goes, when I first came on the board, six or seven years ago, we talked about this, I was very concerned about the role of police with firearms in the schools. And I have to state, during my six years on the board, I've been so impressed by how that, how well that relationship has worked. And I think it's a credit to Lynchburg City Schools and to Chief Zudeman and his team for, I think we've all seen as board members and as family members, the, the positive rapport that SORs have in the schools, which I think is just really great, and I'm so thankful for that.
All right, as far as the MOU goes, and I don't know if this is, if this is a template that's written in stone or not, but, you know, one of the comments that I would have is just as far as the wording goes, is that, for example, under the preamble and the, and the last sentence, it says that students should receive appropriate redirection and support in school and community resources prior to the consideration of suspension, expulsion, involvement in law enforcement, or referral to courts. And I wonder, just as a subtle change, that we really don't want to have any of those suspension, expulsion, law enforcement, or those things to happen, and whether we should consider, if it's possible, to change the wording up to say that, that students should receive appropriate redirection, support in school and community resources in order to avoid the possibility of suspension, expulsion, involvement in law enforcement as referral to the court, just being more of a positive thing rather than the side that it's gonna happen. And a similar change, also very minor, on page number two at the top, under goals, we say that to create and maintain safe and secure school environments, the partnership will collaborate to prevent and reduce crime, violence, victimization, fear in and around the schools, and minimize student involvement with the juvenile criminal justice system, whether we can say, instead of minimize, to avoid student involvement with the juvenile criminal justice assessment. So just simple wording, if it's, if this is a fluid document, that that could be done, and the board agrees, that's great. If it's not fluid, and it's written in stone, I think we all want to have the impression that this is really a positive environment, and we want our children to be protected, and not assume that the next step would be law enforcement or discipline. So that's kind of about the MOU. And then just in general, as we know, we've talked about gun things in the past, and it's been such a terrible last several days, in addition to what happened in Newport News with the mass shootings, and apparently there was a shooting just like yesterday at an alternative education facility in Des Moines where children, students were shot. There was apparently a report that was just released in the last month that showed this from the National Center for Education Statistics, which is part of the U.S. Education Department, talking about what schools are doing to protect themselves. And as we all know, and what we have done, most schools are doing things like we are doing, as far as trying to protect the students with, with various ways. It's interesting, the two things that they found to be most helpful is locking, being able to lock classroom doors, and, and in a facility that can do that automatically for that to be done in one swing. So all the doors are locked, you don't have to worry about someone having to lock the door. And I just had a question about that, Dr. Waterka, as far as is that something that we, we can't address or have addressed? And number two is limiting the access to schools, which I know is what we're talking about as far as the foyer's and all those things. They also go on to say that really, unfortunately, as we all know, despite the millions of dollars and the interventions that are put into schools, the numbers of shootings have increased, and the number of students that have been hurt have been, have been, have risen. And I do want to say that although Dr. Brown has left, I'm sure he's still listening closely to this, but I think what they're trying, what Lynchburg City Schools has tried to done with the youth mental first aid program is, is a big help to that, and also the self-harm assessment program to try to identify this to happen before, because one of the points they make is, the way to stop a shooting in the schools is don't let that gun get into the schools. You know, once it's in the schools or near the schools, it's just gonna be a problem. And the last thing I would ask is, and this is a specific, I mean, question to the administration and the board, is that one of the issues I think that we would recognize with this child that was shot in Newport News, was the child had access to a gun that was loaded. And in the past, we've been approaching, it was several years ago, I think it was probably when the Parkland shooting occurred, by, by local organization to say, can we help educate our families that here are some basic principles about storing weapons in your home, that they should be locked, ammunition should be separate. And I wonder whether we can think about doing that as part of a routine beginning of the year, part of our process, when they get all their papers having to do with the various things they have to do, can that be part of it? Because I think one of the common things that has happened in the shootings over the last several years and the last three days is that every interview here says, this is tragic, this is terrible, I never thought it would happen here, something has to change, and I really want us to be proactive and take information that we know that can help and try to help, because, you know, we know it could be us, it could be some other school nearby, and we want to do everything we can. So thank you for taking my comments and my questions.
So I, I count three questions. So help me through and make sure. So the first thing, I think I just want to say is, you know, I'll echo sort of what you said about Dr. Brown. You know, one of the things I'd like to say is that the most important thing that we do as a school division is put an excellent teacher in front of the classroom, and of course, the second most important thing is have this great learning environment. And I would say that for school safety, the first and most important thing that we can do is to make sure that for every child, someone has a relationship, someone has a clear bond that can recognize if there is a challenge and address those things upfront. You know, we can harden the schools as much as we possibly want, there's always going to be a way to get through. So that, that's the very most important thing, and I think we all recognize that, and I think that, that doesn't mean that we don't do the, do the hardening of the buildings, that's critically important. But again, all of us have this responsibility, I think, to, to do just what you said, right? Is to have those relationships and, and build those, build that culture of, of care around our students and children. But I'll say that the first question about the locked doors.
Yeah.
A significant concern of mine, and I think all of ours at the school division, is the lack of consistency in locking mechanisms in doors throughout the division. So there are lots of different keying systems, there are, you know, different keys go to different things, and as buildings were added on to or renovated, or, or just something needed to change, you know, there wasn't a systematic way for that to occur, and so we spent a lot of time making sure that our first responders have access to those keys when, when that is to occur, and I don't want to talk too much about that. But that is a significant concern. And one of the things we put in for the city, for CIP, is to do a comprehensive rekeying and restructuring of our locking mechanisms throughout the division. Now, that's a multi-year process, that's a multimillion-dollar progress, process, but I agree with you, there, there should be a very fast and quick electronic way to lock the building down as quickly there should be a very fast and quick electronic way, uh, to lock the building down as quickly as we possibly can, that doesn't rely on any kind of human error. And of course, there could be sort of mechanical error and those sorts of things, but certainly, um, we, we, I, I think that's very, very important, the school division that we work on. Again, lots of money, lots of time, lots of effort, um, but it's something we do need to work on, and, and we need to build, um, for that. Um, tell me your second question again.
I think my last one was the, uh, the education piece, as far as could we play a role in having part of our, our, uh, process of students coming into the schools each year, talk about educating them about storage of, of weapons and things like that. It's a pretty standard, I think.
Sure.
Thing most people would accept and agree to.
Absolutely. So, my, my colleague is Pugh, I was talking about that.
Certainly. Um, and we are just beginning the conversation, um, actually, uh, tomorrow with a small group and then a larger group that has representation from most of our schools, if not all of our schools, about the, um, online registration process and registration in person. So, I will certainly take that to the team. Um, uh, you, you know, we can provide information. We can provide, uh, you know, like a flyer and some information. Uh, we could certainly have people at schools to talk about that, um, but I will take that to the team. I think it's a great idea.
Sure.
Um, you know, just something that reminds families of how to keep weapons secure, and also maybe for students about staying away from weapons, um, and, you know, how to ha- handle, um, you know, that situation. So, I'll certainly take that to the team.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Dr. Brennan?
Go back to, well, that was your third question, and then your first question. Um, I do believe the community group at one time even provided gun locks, um, and passed them out to, um, families and community members at one function that we have. So, it's certainly not unheard of that we partner up and do that work about, you know, if, if you are gonna have a gun, you're a parent, you know, gun safety is really important, particularly, you know, as we see with the young ones who don't necessarily understand the consequences of their actions. And then to go back to your first question, yes, the MOU is a fluid document that the school board is going to have to vote on again. So, we're collecting that data from, um, online survey. Um, we'll meet with Ryan and his team, Chief Zudema, and his team to kind of go over it. So, any suggestions? I wrote down your, the two suggestions that you made, um, similar to how we did in the past. We could tweak some wording in there so that that MOU reflects what that partnership between Lynchburg City Schools and LPT, LPD is all about.
All right. I think Dr. Brennan has a follow-up.
Thank you very much, Dr. Edwards and Dr. Waterco. And just one clarification, and I, and I'm not sure about this, Dr. Waterco, but I think they're talking, in addition to locking down the building, it's locking the classroom.
Absolutely.
So, someone can't get into it. So, I, I, I'm sure it's another project, but it's a separate thing of the teacher having to lock that door.
Yeah, absolutely. So, when I talk about the, the rekeying system.
The whole school.
And so, so our terminology is, is a little, so a lock, a lock out is locking the outside doors, and lock down is locking the, all the building.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, and thank you, Dr. Edwards and board.
Dr. Day, I'm coming right to you. Dr. Edwards, in relationship to the MOU, timeline-wise, ultimately, you and Chief Zudema will sign the document, but when are we hoping to, to be able to, um, get to that?
We, we should finalize it before, um, our March work session. So, maybe bring it on our March meeting, and then our March, uh, whatever that is, seventh meeting, and then finalize it on the work session. So, hopefully, we'll have all the comments and feedback, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to mention it publicly. The, the survey has been open for a while, but we haven't talked about it lately, but I just wanna keep that in the forefront of our community members' minds, that it is out there, and it is an agreement that we have, um, that we do review every two years.
Thank you, uh, ma'am superintendent, and our clerk has already duly noted that, uh, it'd be instructed to the board concerning the March, uh, meetings. Uh, Dr. Day?
Uh, two things. Um, if we do have additional suggestions for possible alterations to this document, like the one Dr. Brennan mentioned.
Sure.
Can we just send them to Dr. Edwards or some?
Send it to Dr. Edwards, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then I was just going to mention that the idea of lockable doors on all the classrooms. After the Virginia Tech shootings, they went through and installed special doors on all the classrooms, and I believe they had a system where they could remotely lock the doors. They had a little ticker tape display in every room so they could send an emergency message into all the classrooms. And I don't remember all the details, but I seem to recall there was some concern about teachers being locked into the rooms and having no way to get out. Um, so, my point is, not only is that a very expensive proposition, but there are some difficulties associated with it, too.
Some consideration also needs to be given. If the doors automatically lock, there are gonna be some students that are gonna be in a hallway, or in the restroom, or whatever. So, some thought needs to be given to what would be the process if, in fact, a student or, or a, a staff member were outside of the doors when, you know, in the hallway or whatever, when those, when those doors lock.
And significant challenges for people with health, uh, dynamics.
Yep.
In relationship to even thinking through that in advance. It's a lot, and I know that these items tonight, uh, all of them are so pertinent and so important. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Edwards. Thank you, Dr. Waterco. Many of the board members know, we had a lot of discussions going on about this all the time, and I'm thankful to each of you for being on your jobs as it relates to this. But do not take for granted that this is huge, and we don't want anything to happen in Lynchburg. But if it did, it will occupy quite, I mean, I, I've seen staff have to leave one city and race back over other types of challenges. This is huge. So, thank you, uh, administration and board members for, uh, being willing to discuss this and not think it a misuse of time. Uh, any further questions regarding it?
As we, uh, if I may.
Mr. Tros.
As we go forward, I think, uh, Dr. Edwards brought up an interesting point, um, with the canines, and, you know, whether it's a bomb sniffing dog or a drug sniffing dog and things of that nature. I just ask my fellow board members to be thinking about that. You know, I did criminal defense many years ago, and, um, obviously constitutional issues are a big deal to me. What's interesting is the staffs, the school staff, you know, have a lot more, um, leeway in terms of searching and things of that nature, whereas the police have to, you know, they're bound as constitutional officers with the constitution and can't have illegal search and seizures. With, so, I, I'm not too concerned about those types of se- those kind of searches coming along because of different constitutional issues. And because we're in a different world, I think if there's any deterrent, um, benefit to having, you know, random searches of that sort, you know, that maybe that's, you know, it's maybe necessary just from a deterrent standpoint, I put that almost in the same vein as having the metal detectors as a deterrent. You know, that's kind of, well, now, if I try to bring a gun into school, I'm talking as a school, a member or a student or staff, um, you know, they're gonna think twice about that because you expect to, you know, see it. I think a whole lot less costly approach is to have these random se- you know, searches. Um, I don't like the idea of it, but I certainly see a rationale behind them as a deterrent. With that said, just wanna throw it out there so we can be thinking about it and have a very good conversation at some point in the future.
Civil liberties. Thank you, Mr. Tros. Did you want to say something, Dr. Tros?
Yes, the civil liberties have no place looks like here. Uh, we just put them in the trash can.
Well, I think, uh, the school staff doesn't, doesn't fall underneath constitutional issues anyway, so you, you'd be shocked at what the school staff can do, and it's not in, you know, in terms of searches. I think the constitutional officers, officers will still fall underneath the constitution, so I think they'd be a little bit more limited. I get what you say. I think we have to weigh the potential benefit versus the, um...
These are public spaces.
I'm sorry?
These are public spaces.
Public spaces.
These are not private properties.
And your point being?
So, do searches. How legal it is.
I think constitutionally, I mean, you know, the officers are gonna be under the constitution, so I'm not too concerned about illegal searches and seizures. I'm more concerned about, you have to weigh the public benefit versus the, the intrusion. And unfortunate the state of the world nowadays with, uh, children having guns, access to guns, with, um, gang members and things of that nature. I mean, it's, it weighs heavy on us, and I certainly don't wanna have a, you know, a front-page news story out of Lynchburg when we could've maybe been, done something. It doesn't mean any kind of these canine searches would stop it, but maybe it would be a deterrent. And that's what I just want us to be prepared to talk about. I mean, I don't like the idea of having a canine search come in amongst our children, but I sure don't like the idea of kids bringing guns in and having a problem with that, you know, either. So, anyway, just food for thought.
Mr. Andrews?
Oh, I'm sorry if you hadn't finished, Dr. Andrews.
No, I'm not gonna say that. I'll tell him privately.
Okay.
Another food for thought is, it might be an opportunity for us to partner, or at least invite city council into this conversation. If we're putting security on city-owned buildings, uh, and if it's a multimillion dollar project, I think we all agree, s- s- school board and city council can agree that the safety of staff and kids are extremely important, right? Nobody's gonna deny that. So, if it comes down to it where money becomes a factor, and we need to increase what we're asking for in fa- in terms of budget, because we're trying to provide safety measures, as I think it's just worth the conversation, or at least inviting them so they'll have buy-in as well.
Right. So, noted, Mr. Andrews, we've got a couple of things that we feel very important to take to council, outside of financial dynamics. Very, very good. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, uh, we will continue to plow away with that item, and we'll move on to D four. Uh, and we thank, uh, thankful for our outstanding finance committee that will be doing a lot of work. But Dr. Edwards and, uh, Dr. Waterco, and to what agrees as capazi, uh, some, uh, brief discussion on process around, uh, uh, operating budget.
Certainly. So, hopefully, you've got a sense from Mr. Coleman and Mrs. Pugh and Dr. Brown and Dr. Waterco of, um, our care for our kids, and how a lot of what we wanna do is very people-sensitive, people-demanding, um, having the right staff, having relationships, training staff, um, supporting staff, keeping staff and stu- students safe, um, and even expanding, and I'm grateful for the work, um, of Life Push, having them here tonight, and just the other partner organizations for our and beyond, right? So, we've got uh, ideas for our students to connect them to, um, career, life after Lynchburg City Schools. Um, but, you know, that brings us right back to budget dynamics, which our biggest budget, um, um, recommendation right now, and we've shared this with you, is, is the fifteen fifty. And for those of you who may be watching for the first time, currently our classified staff, which there are about eight different pay schedules for our classified staff, the lowest pay schedule starts at thirteen dollars and eleven cents per hour. And what we are proposing is that we move that low up to fifteen dollars per hour, and then account for compression as best as we can. There may be a tiny bit at the, at the lower level, but not significant compression, um, so that our classified staff will see, um, some significant increases that begin to approach what they can make at, you know, J. Crew, Kroger, Sheets, and some of these other positions where the hourly rate is more, but the job that we have with students is so precious. So, that's one part of it, the fifteen. And then what we wanna do is, um, when we have our finance committee meeting on, I think it's February first, is sort of break down, what is the cost of that? What is the cost of doing the fifteen? And then, also looking at the other dynamic, our, you know, what I call our first responders, which are our teachers and our staff in the classrooms, and raising that base salary, which is somewhere around forty-three, a little over forty-three thousand, up to fifty thousand. So, that's the fifty of fifteen fifty. And again, accounting for compression as you go down and over, uh, and we have some strategies for how we wanna do that and make it cost-effective. Um, so, we want to talk about that as well with, uh, the finance committee. And then, what does that look like, excuse me, on the administrative end? Um, and you can imagine that fifteen looks very different from fifty, which will look very different on the administrative end. So, our goal is to give you an idea of what those three major initiatives, if you remember our budget planning last year, that was the first thing that we dealt with. There are other things that we also have to deal with, um, but we wanna start here with the biggest investment we have, which is our people, and kind of go through that with the finance committee. But keep in mind, there are other things, such as fuel, um, that is also increasing. We have, um, lots of conversation about healthcare, um, and the deficit for healthcare, um, and where we are with our, um, healthcare reserve. So, those things are also going to factor into the development of the budget. Also, what we want to share with you, and I think I shared with you this weekend, just one more time getting into our heads, and some of the thinking about retooling and repurposing some positions to do some other things that were, that are needed. And I will say, I'm very grateful to the team that I have, um, particularly the student services team, and I, I have to thank this board for allowing me to repurpose some positions and do things differently so that we can have a Director Brown standing there talking about alternatives to suspension and academies and mental health and things like that. And that was due to us sort of looking at what works, what doesn't work, and retooling and repositioning. So, we'll talk a little bit about some thoughts that we have, um, there, and start to explore where can we have some cost savings. Also, keep in mind that we are going to be getting right into the heart of the facility study, and that is gonna have an impact on future decisions, maybe not as much for the, um, starting FY twenty-four school year, but definitely FY twenty-five, and we'll have to lay the groundwork for, um, where we're going with that. Um, I also just wanted to quickly update you that, um, Amy and, um, Reed and I met with, um, Donna Witt and, uh, the city manager Bender, and Greg, Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick, to talk a little bit about budget and their process and where we are. We did have a conversation about the school funding formula that Mr. Patrick, um, went over with city council. Many of you, I shared that presentation with you, and we definitely agree that that's something that, um, both parties need to, to dig into, um, with regard to that, if that is the direction that we're going. Uh, but we also recognize that it's January twenty-something, and the clock is ticking. So, we may be, once again, providing a number to city council, but before we get there, we want to vet that with our finance committee, and then bring that back to the full board in February, so that this governing body, we're all on the same page about what our needs are, inclusive of what you heard tonight with, um, you know, the mentoring, the tutoring, the student support. Um, we haven't even really talked about some of the CTE options and things like that. So, that is our plan. We wanted to put that out there to let you know the work that the finance committee is, um, going to be tackling in the, in the very near future. And again, Dr. Waterco, please fill in the blanks of anything that I probably missed.
Yes, ma'am. So, just, just one or two things. Um, so, I know we, um, earlier in the, in the budget process, one of the things we talked about was adjusting how our budget development process was occurring, particularly at the building and the department level. Um, I do wanna report that principals and directors really did an outstanding job this year of taking a hard look at their budget and thinking about how they can redeploy resources that maybe weren't used in the best way they possibly could. Now, the reality is, is the school division, uh, you, you, a huge percent of our budget is personnel. So, some of that is being done, and mu- much of what the principals are doing, the sort of operating money, um, isn't a huge amount of money, but at least they're thinking about it. Uh, and in many cases, we had, uh, principals and directors say, you know, "I need, I need a person here, but I don't so much need this type of position." And so, they did a great job of, of suggesting some, some good changes, um, that can get us to being relatively budget-neutral. Not that there aren't plenty of requests and, and those sorts of things, uh, but they did do a really very good job of that this year, and I appreciate that. Um, the other thing is, I'll just say that, you know, we, we've heard, uh, heard loud and clear, um, there may be a need to, in order to do the things we wanna do, to think about some of the programs that we're already, we're doing as a division and redirect some of those resources. And so, I know that is certainly on our mind, and we, uh, may have some opportunities to, to provide you some, uh, options there, and we'll talk about that with, with the finance committee.
Thank you, Dr. Waterco. Dr. Gupta?
I brought it up in, uh, finance committee for all of you. Right now, we allocate budget based on ADMs, and as the, uh, noise about school choice and other thing picks up, to me, they should be weighted average instead of equal weighted average. So, Mr. Andrews' son and my daughter are two different students. My daughter has an IEP which requires a lot more resources than your son. Don't take it wrong. But so, when we do the ADM, they count one plus one, two, and multiply it by a thousand dollars. So, as the school choice, uh, thing picks up, we may be left with a lot of, uh, high-end consumption students, and the budgets will be taken out based on the ADM. So, our advocacy going forward should be... So our advocacy going forward should be on weighted average instead of equal, uh, weight. Higher weight, you know, weighted average means you al- allocate different students, different weights in terms of calculating ADM. That was my, uh, blab. But the, my question for Dr. Edwards is fifteen fifty is a great idea, and based on the slides you shared, is about seventy-six million dollars for personnel cost. And, uh, if I do the rough numbers, let's say it'll cost ten percent of our budget, which is seven point six million. Do we have bandwidth for that much savings to push this fifteen fifty forward? Or do we, are we looking for all new money? If I put a number of seven point six million for you?
So we have some funds in our, um, compensation supplement. That is for the SOQ-funded, um, positions, and I think you got a document that was shared with you so you understand that, um, all things are not created equal when it comes to positions and SOQ, and even the ones that are funded are not necessarily funded at the level that, that we have them. So there is some funding there. There is possibly some savings or some re- gerrymandering for what we want to do in retooling. Um, but no, as long as the, um, city is, or sorry, as the state is moving forward with providing salary increases for staff, some staff, there is an additional burden on us that is not always found in savings. Now, what we have done, um, and I'll tell you, um, quite honestly with transportation, after about two years of we're not getting the people, we cut the people to raise the price, right? So that we could pay folks more. Um, and that worked to some degree. I would still like to have more, um, bus drivers, obviously. But we weren't getting them, so we, we have worked diligently to work on that salary. That's not the same with math teachers. You just can't keep cutting math teachers and hoping that the remaining ones are just going to survive and thrive. They're not. Um, and our teachers are, I mean, they are amazing and phenomenal, and they take on so much for these kids. But we've got to create a better learning environment for our students, but we also need to create a better working environment for our staff. And we're going to need partnership. We're going to need our partners across the street to kind of work with us and see the value of our, um, students. Uh, Dr. Gupta, you talked about school choice, and for me, um, you know, as I look at school choice, my whole thing is, you know, and for our individual schools, this is the best choice. That is our mission, to make our school the best choice, right? There's, well, why would you go there? Why would you go anywhere else? When you have this, when you have the wealth of AP offerings, when you have industry credentials that you can just get right there in high school, you know, when you have so many extracurricular activities. But these are things that we want to promote to really encourage our parents, community members, and families to choose Lynchburg as the school, schools of choice.
I'm sorry to put you in spot, Dr. Edwards. My question is still unanswered. Are the seven point six million dollars, as of rough numbers, how much new money would you be looking for?
I don't know yet. That's why we're going to the finance committee meeting, Dr. Gupta. So you can't put me on the spot right now, because we're going to give a cost for each one of those individual, um, components, as well as some other additional things. So I know we're, on a rough estimate, you are talking a little over seven million dollars if you did meatball math and did it that way. But as far as the exact, like, what the fifteen costs for the staff that are on our scattergram, you can imagine that would look differently if we have a lot of veteran teachers versus, um, newbies. So that is the work that we want to do with the finance committee and then bring it back to the full board. So I'm not avoiding your question. I'm just letting you know the process for your question to get answered.
Thank you, Dr. Br- Dr. Day.
Yeah, um, so a lot of the discussion we've just had is concerning the details of a funding formula. And, um, in the long run, I think I'm in favor of establishing an appropriate funding formula, but I'm a little bit nervous about jumping into it too quickly, particularly since we have this facility studies in progress that may well change what buildings we have, uh, which means it will affect our overhead costs. Um, if there is, uh, changes on related to school choice that affects money that comes to us from the state, that certainly would affect the design of a funding formula as well. Now, I know there's always going to be uncertainties on the horizon, but I'm just wondering if, if there's, at this point in time, there's particularly the filks facilities issue that's, we don't know where that's going to send us. If it's premature to try to establish a funding formula now, it might be wiser to try to wait until we know what the outcome of the facilities study is and where that's going to take us before we try to formulate.
Dr. Day, I know the superintendent can respond, but I'm of the opinion that the practicality of implementing the funding formula for this iteration of budget is not going to happen. But, uh, Dr. Edwards, you want to speak to that?
Yeah. I, I think I started by saying that the hour is late, um, and realistically, to do, um, what I would call a collaborative funding formula, it would require both school board and city council reps along with administrative teams on both sides to work together. Um, and I don't know that we have the time to, one, educate everybody. And if you remember Mr. Patrick's, um, presentation, there were at least four options there. And then when we met with them, there were more. Um, so it is a very vast, um, conversation. And Dr. Day, you bring up a great point. That facility study is kind of looming over there in terms of, you know, where we're, where we're going forward. So I do think we're looking at our previous practice where, for the last at least five years that I've been here, I've had to give the city manager, here is our number with some rationale behind. This is why we, you know, when it was level funding, this is what we needed level funding for. These are the new things that we were trying to do, um, within level funding, inclusive of giving staff a raise. Which, quite honestly, that's where we've been, um, for quite some time. Um, but that's, that's going to get real tight, real fast, as raises continue to come from the state government, only for SOQ-funded folks.
Right. I have absolute confidence in Dr. Kim Senha and the finance team.
Out of pressure.
Look at it, bring it up, bring it to the full board, everybody being fully knowledgeable. So I'm not sure if there's too much more we need to discuss tonight. We just want to make sure that the full board is aware of the process and let the process work, and of course, each board member can be a part of stopping by any of the meetings to, to see what's going on.
If I could just add, and, and we are behind on our, on our, um, our usual calendar and the milestones that we're supposed to be reaching at this point. Uh, typically, this time of year, we're going through those additional asks and, and making the case for them, uh, for our budget request, and we haven't, we're not there yet because there's so much uncertainty. Um, so, um, and that's state, you know, state decisions, local decisions, funding formula, what have you. So there's a lot of moving parts. So, uh, just want to explain, that's why we're not as far along as we typically are. But we are meeting next week, and, um, we hope to accomplish a great deal at that time.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair of the Committee. Appreciate that. All right, so everybody clear on that, and I communicated that to the best of my ability to one of our media platforms earlier today. All right, that brings us to the last item under D before informational items, and I think I can do this in two minutes or less, and then we'll be in informational items. Uh, I first want to just quickly say to each of you, as I establish eye contact with you, it is a pleasure to serve on this board. Uh, I think we deport ourselves as professionals, and a lot of issues that other boards have across the Commonwealth and beyond, we seem to be able to know how to agree and disagree agreeably. As these five months unfold with the current, uh, composition of the school board, I want each of us to work hard. And I want you to know that your chair is doing the best that I know to do to work hard every second during the balance of these five months. I want each of you to understand that every chair has the right to use his or her leadership style to get the work done that is required of a governing team. For me, I believe in utilizing individuals around me. I feel very strongly that if you have a vice chair, the vice chair should be utilized. I feel very strongly if you have committee chairs of committees, that they should be utilized. So at the pie breakfast, I asked Dr. Senha to give the presentation. You have a strong clerk. So allow me to lead in the manner in which I know how to lead, and we will get as much done as humanly possible for kids and set this next board up for continued great success. To that end, these board goals are essential. We talked about them at an earlier retreat, and I don't want them to be hidden anywhere. So I bring them to you again tonight for your review. We did not vote on these ever, according to our clerk. We just resoluted the fact that these were the things we were interested in. But there are four items in one sheet. And in working with, uh, our vice chair, I've concluded that three goals are really what we have. Four and three are essentially the same. So we combine them. So if it pleases the board, just keep in mind that as relationship to goal one, starting in your July work session, according to our schedule, that board will then work on the process for developing and implementing a new five-year strategic plan. Any of us who want to give comments and thoughts, uh, to make sure that they're included in that process as it unfolds, so be it. But that's July of this year. This is board goals encompassing of this year. Under two, uh, you've heard about the compensation plan. Thank you to Finance Ministry helping us to do that. I'm not sure if we are clear on how we're working our universal pre-K. So I want to hear about how we're trying to make sure that we're doing our due diligence over these next five months to make sure that whatever that is all about is happening. We've got our facility study for C as it relates to Director Brown and some potential meetings with council. We got D straight. Under E, I know this board has talked about the importance of data. And as you could see tonight, we're getting presentations, presentations earlier. We've even talked about the need for data analysis. I know that Dr. Senha has a particular gift in that area. I'm not sure if we really always have the data we need to interpret, to make good, solid decisions as we take care of our, our strategic matters and so forth. And so how do we go about making sure we have the data we need to make the hard policy decisions that we need to make so that we are actually helping to move the division forward at all times? Um, and so that takes care of two. And then as it, as it relates to three, if you see how the language has been combined to include the elected officials, the advocacy others, if you've mentioned that word just a minute ago, so powerful, so, of telling our story. And as we go before council, I've heard tonight, behaviors, I've heard the need for security pieces to be shared. We want to do that. And so, um, that is something that hopefully, in talking with the mayor already, we will have a meeting before them or on their agenda in February and March to discuss that, as well as I want to talk to them about some matters concerning V S B A, because there's still this notion that V S B A supported N S B A in denying or altering or hindering parents having participation. That is not the case. V S B A pulled out of N S B A, and I want to make sure that record is clear since this body is a part of V S B A, uh, at the present time. And so the whole notion of updates to stop stake, uh, stakeholders, facilities, we got Waterco to deal with that. Hosting these community conversations. Dr. Edwards, how do we want to handle that over the next five months? And then making sure that, um, we're in the front of local media, and we've got work sessions to discuss that. So I just want each of you to push me, let's push each other, let's work together, and let's need, do what we need to do for kids over these next five, five months. Dr. Gupta.
So when I came to school board, I was told each one is one of the nine school board members, chairs, responsibilities, just to coordinate the meetings. We spent two hours driving to Charlottesville, four, five hours sitting there, and then two hours driving back, and we came up with these goals. Now, today you're presenting an edited version of the goals we agreed on without even consult, at least I was not consulted. Maybe the elite group was consulted. Uh, you know, uh, edited version of a top-down, that's how I look at it. That this is what it is, take it. And on, what bothers me the most is you've got personal goals and somebody, I don't know if it's you or somebody you assigned, has defined my personal goal, which I may not be able, capable, or willing to do it. You see what I'm saying? And we made it a public document without even consulting the person whose personal goals are part of this document. It doesn't make sense. Have we become an autocratic board where we say top-down, this is what I'm pushing, take me as your leader, and I'm going to give you this piece of plate?
Dr. Gupta, I, I appreciate you sharing that. The hour is late. This is an agenda item with two sheets. What we had and suggestions being presented to the board. Raise your hand, I answered you. Premature to say, which is the assumption of this board and how we have deported ourselves across time. And nobody's pushing anything on anybody. Excuse me, sir. And so therefore, is this a, you see the second sheet with some items in red, for us to talk about this? This is for discussion. The hour is late. But this is for discussion, Dr. Gupta. This process of doing the work is going to happen by all nine of us. I beg to differ. This is nothing personal. It's simply trying to suggest that here are some goals. How are we going to make sure that these things happen? And I took what I heard from this group tonight to insert. Now, if there are some challenges, Mr. or Dr. Gupta, that you and I need to talk about, let's do that privately. But those assertions of the deportment of the leadership of this board are inaccurate. What is the pleasure of the board? I simply wanted to bring that to you tonight because I want us to work. This is a working board. We are not on vacation. And we together came up with these goals, and we together will continue to support the goals, trying to streamline them to make sure that we understand how we're actually doing it and not just words on paper, and that requires nine persons. Dr. Senha.
Um, if I, I may add, I, I was a little concerned at the strike through on this because it was something that we had discussed, and
Right.
perhaps it's just a, 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 a matter of framing, that this is a proposal because there's, there is overlap in three and four, and once you explained it, I can see that that makes sense.
Right.
But, um, so, you know, a proposal to amend.
Right.
So it wasn't necessarily framed like that. It's just given to us, this is what we're going to do. So I think that's where the, the, um, the pushback you're, you're feeling is coming from, and I, I honestly think that's legitimate. So I think just a little bit of framing of what your objective was with this might have helped smooth things over. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
And as far as the personal goals, uh, these were things that we had mentioned at the meeting. So I do recall mine being, um, what I had articulated, so, um.
Not me. Maybe you have. I'm not, we agreed on for, I'm questioning the process. You know, the process, otherwise, why should we spend hours of productivity time dwell at, going to Charlottesville, sitting in a V S B A, give them money to conduct a session that's a taxpayer money, and then come back and quietly edit that, add including elected officials? Are they superior than other stakeholders? You know, these wordings have been added to appease somebody? I don't know. My point is, just looking at this document as, I'm being blindsided. It added up to the agenda at the eleventh hour. And, uh, uh, there could have been, uh, much more communication about, that guess what? We made in Charlottesville, we are going to amend that document, and this, this is the version which will be put on the agenda.
It, it seems to me that, that item number three simply takes some of the wording from item number four and condenses it so that it says basically the same thing. Am I misunderstanding something?
That is correct.
But stakeholders, including elected officials, has a lot of, um, with all stakeholders. Everybody who lives in this community is a stakeholder. Why to, um, include elected officials? Is it to appease some politicians?
Well, in number four, it said, the board will regularly cultivate collaborative relationships with elected officials at all levels and so forth, which basically is condensing. Which basically is condensing, is putting that language in number three.
But in number three, with all stakeholders in the red, including elected officials? It could be including parents, it could be including teachers, it could be including.
But all stakeholders was in number three before.
Yeah. So what's the purpose of doing, including elected officials?
Well, I, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I see elected officials in number four, which sounds like it's just putting information from number four into number three so that there's one sentence rather than, you know, one paragraph rather than two paragraphs.
All right, any further comments on this? Because, very well said, because essentially, we have three goals. And that's all we're trying to clarify. Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do find them to be somewhat, there is some overlap. But I see communication as, as done in three is sort of more one way, where the, the fourth one is more active in terms of collaboratively working together and establishing relationships. And, and so I think there's a, there is a qualitative difference in that regard. So I, I really do think that we should have had an opportunity to have this as an agenda item to work through and.
And that's the purpose of this.
And discuss.
Yes, ma'am. That, that, and I'm sorry it was called it that way. And in terms of framing, obviously, there's some thoughts around individuals having premeditated motives. I have none. But the issue is, it's only agenda for discussion. So this was not to say this is the way it is. It is to have a discussion. And I'm not quite clear why there is so much trouble about having a discussion because that's why it's only agenda.
Well, again, language is important. So it says revised, and maybe, again, to say proposed revision. They, there's a definite qualitative difference in that presentation. Like I said, it's framing.
Sure, sure. Okay, I just come in, that's. Yeah, but Dr. Brennan, before Dr. Day, please.
I just wanted to ask two things. One is, what is the status of this document? This is not an official policy. We've never voted on it. I viewed it as just a summary of what was said at that V S B A meeting.
That's right. And I, I asked it, please, I'm not trying to cut you off. You still have the floor. But I, we asked the clerk, was this an item that we ever voted on? We, we never voted on this. So it's just language. And we're just trying to make it as simple as possible, bring it as a discussion. And the qualitative pieces that you're saying, I have no problem with it. Just want us to get it clear. But I also want to make the larger statement, that this is not a lame duck board. We're working, we've got goals, and we've got to get done what we've got to get done. And I'm very serious about that.
My, the second question is, are we being asked to take some action about this?
No, sir. Because we never voted on it. We're just trying to get clarity on what we were doing and then how we're getting it done. But Dr. Brennan, you, I'm sorry, you want to add?
I want to go back to what I said at the beginning of the meeting, that I'm sort of more of a big-picture guy than a little-picture guy. And I think, and, and I think Dr. Sen Ha's comments are exactly on target. You know, this is, we're suppo, this, this, the main point of this document and discussion tonight is to say, here are the items that we want to do as a board. Are we getting them done? And if we're not getting it done, what should we do? That's, it really is not wording so much. And I think, and I'm, and as the person who put that word revised in, I think you're exactly right. It should have been draft, it should have been proposal. The goal was, put it before the board to see, is this wording okay? But the bigger thing is, you know, are we doing these items? And like, for example, Dr. Coleman was saying, you know, number one is actually going to be next year's board. So that one, people can have input, they can do want to. But there are things on here that we still are not doing, like board-hosted community conversations. You know, how do we do those? That's really the goal of, the wording part is important, and we want to do it. But this is a proposal. This is not a document that we wanted to bring and say, this is the way it is. It should have been draft, it should have been proposal. But rather than, and, and I think any changes are totally available and open. But the real goal is to say, you know, what are we going to, what are we going to do with the goals that we want to accomplish in the next six months?
Yeah, and if I could just quickly add, you know, I feel, I was partly in impetus for this because I'd like to see us be a very effective, high-performing board. And the only way to do that is to set some, some objectives for ourselves as a board in addition to how we conduct our business here. And so what are, what are things that are important that'll help us do what we need to do more effectively? And I certainly believe that better, well, establish relationship with city council. You know, it can get somewhat adversarial at times, but I don't see why it has to be that way. There's no reason it should be that way. We all want what's best for the city of Lynchburg. And so to open those lines of communication, and I also felt in that regard, we can't just be showing up at city council when it's time to ask for money. We're a big chunk of their budget, we're a big asset to the city of Lynchburg. So it's important to have ongoing communication and be part of their public record. So that's why those things are in there. But that's basically the gist of this. It's not necessarily policy. It's just, how do we? When it comes to the end of a academic year, and we want to evaluate ourselves.
Right.
Did we do some of the things that we said would, would be important? Now, what those things end up being, that's for all of us to decide and debate and figure out. So.
And, and I'm coming to you, Dr. Day. And they're essential, Dr. Sen Ha, because really, how policy and how the board operates kind of flows out of that. So that's something that we did do in Charlottesville and came back with. But I want to make sure that I, I'm clear to the board. It is your current chair, James Coleman, who wanted to make sure these last two meetings, that this wasn't something that we did and never looked at anymore. And I hope you can appreciate the leadership to say, I'm putting it in front of you to make sure that we can together think about, how do we get it to look however we want it to look? Streamlined, and then how are we going to help to make it happen? Dr. Day, and then Dr. Carter.
So I would suggest that we don't need to contemplate changes in the wording of the document. Sounds like the purpose here is for us to look at this as a record of what we said we wanted to accomplish, and then sit down and say, well, how are we doing? Right? So I don't think we need to adjust the document to do that. What we need, this goes on another future discussion session, where we need to sit down and go through these, how are we doing on developing a competitive compensation plan? How are we doing on universal pre-K? Let's talk about the topics. Let's not focus on the wording of the document. I don't think the wording of the document will help us answer those questions. So I would suggest, suggest we just curtail any further discussion of modification to this document and look for an opportunity to talk about the particular issues on here.
Dr. Carter, thank you, Dr. Day.
And we will have a chance because the legislative advocacy and community relations, we use these items for our breakfast, and we're going to follow up. Our meeting has been counseled for January 31st. But these same items are going to be there. And we, I was going to ask, after the meeting, is that you, if these are not your personal goals, to let us know so that we can try to see where we can move towards your strengths and things of your interest. And that we can, we're going to start looking at these and see how we can help with some of this, telling our stories. That's what we're, that's what our purpose is for the remainder of this year, hopefully.
And I'm telling you, when you say personal goals, I just want to just.
Well, with the, if these are not what you, what you really like or interested in or want to advocate for, then let us know.
Oh, yeah, got you. Anyone else wanted to speak on this? Dr. Gupta?
I'm go first.
Well, hold on, Dr.. I really wanted, I'm interested in hearing because this started with, I'm really.
This is a Charlottesville document which we developed as a result of what, four, five hours of retreat? And that document, when we left there, had page one. Now I see personal goals. I'm just trying to figure out where these personal goals landed as part of this document. I've never seen them before. Assuming that you think those are my things I like to do? Who did I tell that I like to be? You know, where did I articulate these things?
I, I must admit, because I'm completely and totally transparent, the only sheet that I've been looking at and reviewing and discussing was the first page. But that's why I asked about the second. This is second, the first time I'm looking at the second page, sir. So, man, clerk, where did the second page come from?
It was with the document, did you?
So with, with what we discussed in Charlottesville?
Mostly notes that they took.
Yeah, so this comes.
And I don't think the personal goals need to be part of this at all.
Who supplied you second page? Where did you get this page from?
It was sent, the document was sent email to me, Dr. Brennan and Dr. Coleman.
No, I'm sorry, this came from V S B A is where these, is where the, the original document and those comments came from, the comments we made at the meeting.
But, but, did I say I like to promote policies?
Dr. Gupta, I don't know what you said, to be honest with you. What I'm trying to say is that this second sheet, I did not look at that. And the clerk is making it clear that when she copied, as I instructed her both sheets, she's saying she got the second sheet from V S B A, and she gave it to us.
And we might have written these down on cards, I can't remember.
It was some notes. I mean, I remember saying something near the end of the evaluation, and it was a little bit rushed. I, I remember writing some words in, I'm sorry, but.
But keep in mind, we're getting ready to bring, but this is really good. And I've been on the board for nine years. We are really getting there, and I'm very proud of this discussion. Dr. Brennan?
So I just want to say, I think what Dr. Day has is exactly right. And I think we, as far as going off the tracks, we're kind of going off the tracks. And I think that's partially perhaps the chair and vice chair's chart. But all we're really trying to do is identify the items, you know, review them as we go along. And the wording doesn't, you know, doesn't make any difference. So I think I would, if this is a recommendation, where I would certainly second that, we do it. I would just ask that we then go on, and perhaps, as, as Dr. Carr said, through legislative agenda committee, we can do some of these things. But I think we really want to keep it before the board as items for the reason that we originally started this.
All right, Dr. Day.
I'd move that we close discussion on this agenda.
I'm going to say something.
But I don't, I don't think we need to even do that. I think your point is well-taken, and I, I'll show you how we do it. Dr. Gupta?
The personal goal mean, is like a trap. Suppose I say, I'm up for reappointment this year. I don't even know what my personal goal is. So I've been, it's questioned left and right. Why did you wait for that financial policy? What did you do? Because remember, that was your personal goal. Because I've been told all along, we work as one board, right? Not as individual playing instrument players. So.
If I recall correctly, though, we were asked, and, and most of us can probably indicate, we were asked what our, kind of what our personal goal is, what is it that we wanted to accomplish? And so somebody jotted that information down. Do, do any of you recognize your personal goals?
Oh, yes, yes, this is me.
I don't.
Okay. So it sounds to me like the only problem is that yours either wasn't recorded or wasn't recorded accurately. But since it was information that we supplied, then supply us with what your personal goal should be, and problem solved.
And that maybe I'm the last guy in that list because nobody knew what I, my goal is.
You made it up. We'll give them one.
But anyway, that's very powerful because I, I wasn't even thinking about the existence of a second sheet because I haven't been looking at that over the last two weeks. And that's no problem now. I think what we would do, as we conclude this discussion, we never voted on the matter ever anyway. I don't think we need to. We'll go with the language we can power from the original four. And I am going to be a nuisance, if you will, in making sure that each of us are doing what we can to make these things happen. If we move now on to the conclusion of our meeting, I would like to appreciate the section E, the informational items, that the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee has been counseled. Several of us are going to be going to the Capitol Conference in Richmond. And we will be there, I'll be there Sunday, but we'll be there Monday. And Tuesday, Dr. Carter is already attempting to set up wonderful meetings with us to do advocacy along with the superintendent to our two delegates and two senators. Item two, the next finance and facilities committee, that's going to be.
Do we have a new date for the meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No, we'll get that date out.
Very good, Dr. So note that we get the new date out. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Day. The finance and facilities, that's huge. And thank you, Dr. Sen Ha, that's February 1. Our next school board meeting will be February the 7th and on February the 21st. We'll have our work session, and we'll continue to hammer these things out. After three hours and thirty-some minute meeting, we adjourn.